Thank you. Thank you so much. It's a full house. The thing I want to say, Happy New Year, I wish everyone, not only over here, including the audience, the wonderful, magnificent 2025. Okay, right now it's about...
The mic's not...
You don't have a mic?
Testing.
Testing, testing. The mic's on, that's all.
No, they're on.
It's just so low.
Hello, hello, hello.
They're on.
It's low.
My mic's working, right? It's okay. I don't think they want to listen to me, so it's fine.
It's all low.
Okay, it's fine.
The volume's low.
No, it's fine. Okay, let's go do this one more time. Happy New Year. Happy New Year. Thank you, appreciate it, okay? And welcome to our January 7, 2025 City Council meeting. Right now it's 7:03 and meeting now in session. Tonight, the invocation will be led by our traveling Kelly Dupie, pastor from the West Covina Police Department. Council member Gutierrez, you will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by our beautiful Rhea. And she flew from New York, just come to sing for us. You're going to sing the National Anthem and, and the West Covina, beautiful, okay? And God bless West Covina. All rights, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, tonight we come to be a part of a special evening where we get to witness the swearing-in of our new Chief of Police, Tony Cortina. Thank you, Lord, for how you have developed and prepared him for this new assignment. We ask that you would bless him and use him to do your work. Fill him with your Holy Spirit and anoint him spiritually, just as you anointed your servants in the Bible. We ask for wisdom, that you would guide him daily, so that your will would be done in our police department and in our city. Thank you for raising Chief Cortina up for such a time as this and granting him success in all he does. As the prophet Isaiah promised the nation of Israel, so, Lord, we speak your promise to Chief Cortina. Do not fear, for I am with you. Do not be dismayed, for I am your God. I will strengthen you and help you. I will uphold you with my righteous right hand. Lord, we also ask your blessing over our city council and their decisions tonight. Thank you, Lord, for giving them wisdom, as they lead our city to walk in all the blessings that you have for us. Once again, Lord, thank you for blessing us with our new Chief of Police, Tony Cortina, and using him powerfully to do your will. We ask you to bless this time now with your presence, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Testing. You're welcome. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. Bless West Covina, town that we love. Education, destination, start a business, raise a family, own a home. Kids and seniors, friends and neighbors, hundred years now, growing strong. Bless West Covina, our home sweet home.
Have a seat, please. Thank you so much, Rhea. You brought down the roof. You're the best, okay? Rhea is one of our West Covina resident graduate from, oh, okay, Edgewood High School, right? Yes, and then she now studied in New York Opera, okay, and she's the best. We, we very proud of her. She's been singing for us for all the event, and we so happy and honored to have you fly back, okay, and sing for us, and it's our honor to have you. We know you will be a superstar. So good luck in New York, continue to your education. Thank you. And, and now we go to the city, Assistant City Clerk, would you roll call, please?
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Councilman Cantos.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Wu.
Here.
Thank you.
And we don't have a closed session, so we have nothing to report out, so we move on. Next one would be the presentation, proclamation acknowledging National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. So I think we have a video, right?
Yes.
Now go ahead.
Yeah, I'm watching it too. I see them every day.
Curtains, they're always drawn in this place.
I know.
That guy seems like he's charging. I don't know. I don't feel very good about this.
We have to report this.
Okay, and we have Officer Brendan Kaufman. Would you please come to the podium? Oh, another officer's a lieutenant. And my bad, okay, I know. Don't pick me up. Okay, and I want to say thank you so much for showing up to give us some of the information and how we prevent the human trafficking, so.
Go ahead. Good evening. January is National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. In case you didn't know, every year since 2010, the President of the United States has dedicated the month to raise awareness about human trafficking and to educate the public about how to identify and prevent this crime. There are an estimated 27.6 million people, children and adults, subjected to human trafficking around the world, including the United States. The West Covina Police Department is combating this by having a detective assigned to the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, abbreviated as ICAC for short. ICAC was developed in a response to the increasing number of children and teenagers using the internet and due to the heightened online activity by predators seeking unsupervised contact with potential underage victims. Those agencies that are in the ICAC Task Force are engaged in proactive and reactive investigations, forensics examinations, and criminal prosecutions. With ICAC, they want to focus on the three paradigms, which is preventing crime, protecting victims, and prosecuting the traffickers. In 2024, our assigned ICAC detective participated in community conversations with parent-teacher associations, sorry, schools and community members regarding safeguarding children in our community. The detective participated in several investigations that resulted in the rescue of children who were being trafficked or were in the process of being trafficked. All identified victims received assistance through Diane Franklin, who is our crime advocate with the police department, or from the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office. Individuals who have been identified as human traffickers are prosecuted by the appropriate district attorney's office. By proclaiming January as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, we can raise awareness to reduce the number of crimes that occur by rescuing victims and prosecuting their traffickers. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Yeah, okay, I might have a question for you. It's a quiz and test. Okay, as a, so one thing, I think is important is this, okay, I think the human trafficking is modern slavery, okay? We need to stop this crime and make sure that everybody gets treated equally, and if you see something, you say something, I think that's important for community to, to help each other, okay, to help, okay, and to prevention and to save all those person kind of in hell currently in that situation. So maybe you have a suggestion for us, how we report to police and how we can do so-called the prevention?
So prevention for us, like I said, our detective, he can come out to speak with, usually it's the schools that we're focusing on, because it is, our detective's assigned for internet crimes against children. So he does go to district meetings. Last year, we went to a local community meeting that they had, where he spoke on preventative measures. A lot of it comes down to ultimately the parent and guardian watching their kids to make sure they know who they're conversing with, but also he gives pointers on how to get out of those uncomfortable conversations by people who are trying to recruit them and then obviously use them to further their crimes.
Got it, and I think quickly, I did, another issue we have is we have a lot of undocumented, okay, immigrant, okay, potentially they become, okay, and have been abused. So it becomes kind of slavery and, okay, human trafficking. So how we to help those people, okay, and is that under privilege and they're under undocumented, how can we help those people out of slavery, out of human trafficking?
So the FBI has a website dedicated strictly for human trafficking. Inside of West Covina, obviously, they could still call the police like they normally would. We do receive tips anonymously online through Crime Stoppers that we investigate, and then we could team with either whether it be ICAC or whether it be another human trafficking task force within LA County or even the FBI to obviously put an end to, or at least prevent human trafficking.
So everybody got it? So we're going to help each other to, for sure, to prevent any further of human trafficking in West Covina and the other community. So here, I'm not going to give you any quiz anymore, okay, so.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna say, modern-day slavery is the absolute way to describe it, because that's what it is.
Exactly.
They are exploiting these people, and we want to basically rescue them and then get them the help they need, the assistance they need to get proper jobs and get them out of those situations.
So human right, okay, those people need help, okay, and because they kind of in trouble in their situation and people abuse them, and the criminal abuse them, so how can we help them? Thank you so much, Lieutenant.
Yes, sir.
And here, and here I have a proclamation, okay, a National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, and we announce, and hopefully every month, we will continue to help our community with all the potential victim for this situation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, our city, our city manager doesn't want to give up this topic, okay, he want to continue, she want to continue, and she talk about, we have a lot of Neighborhood Watch, so we can utilize our Neighborhood Watch, right, sir?
Of course, you can utilize Neighborhood Watch. Obviously, this is for us, it's going to fall to the schools for the kids, and then certain businesses that are exploiting people who, who need something. So whether you're in a crisis via national or a national emergency, or if they're exploiting you because you're trying to get something like your citizenship, and you come over here, and then they're exploiting them to basically pay them in some fashion, and you're giving off some work, trying to be a little bit PG about it, but we're trying to prevent those people from being in the situations to where they have to use themselves as currency.
Got it, okay, so you happy with that, city manager?
He wants more, no.
You want more? Okay, okay, and we, time limit, we need to continue to move on. Okay, so thank you so much for, now here's a proclamation. Good job, Lieutenant Kaufman. Thank you so much. Okay, now we move on, okay, to next, our presentation, and I want to call our council member, Brian Gutierrez, would you come down? I think he bring a, a big fat check for us, right? Want to come down?
I don't want anything.
Okay. You really bring a big check. I'm talking the check of the amount, not the size, okay? And we want a K9, do we have our K9 member here? Sergeant? Sir, would you please come?
Oh, I'm not.
Yeah. Where's the, where's the, where's the K9? Sergeant? Where's the dog?
We're afraid, just bite him.
Where, where's the K9? Okay, we're in the field right now, you can see today is the day we're going to help in, okay, residents, so. And I know Brian tried to secure a check for us, for how much?
Yeah, I can't even hear myself with this mic, just now. Yeah, well, I'm, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to come down and, and on behalf of myself and the city council, and, you know, I have the great honor to work with various organizations, and on behalf, I was able to secure the Friends of West Covina K9 unit, $20,000 to purchase this new dog. So that will, that will cover the full expense to cover a new police K9, because one just retired, so we'll be having another K9 out in the field protecting our community, and so. Yes.
We want the K9 officer say something?
My name is Sergeant Stephen McLean. I'm one of the current K9 supervisors, former K9 handler myself, and also my father, who retired here from West Covina, was a K9 handler, so it means a lot to me to be a part of this program, and for anybody who's interacted with our police dogs or just canines in general, they truly are the heroes out there. They make our job a lot safer and the community much safer, because they are the ones that are putting their lives on the line to go into a dangerous situation that they have no idea what is going on, but they sacrifice their lives to protect us and to protect the community. So it is a great honor to receive this check, and thank you very much for getting this for our program. It means the world, and we're able to keep four dogs in our program, and we're moving strong and keeping West Covina Police Department and the K9 unit on the map. Thank you very much.
And maybe in Italian, I want to say something?
On behalf of the Friends Group, we want to thank you for this generous donation. It goes towards all of their training and everything, just to keep the community safe, and I know that it's a great program that the West Covina Police Department has. I know that four dogs is not typical for any department, but it is for, for our department. We like to keep everyone safe, our citizens and our officers. Thank you so much.
And I'll, I'll just say one more thing, and, and that is, this council stays committed on supporting the men and women of the West Covina Police Department and our firefighters, making sure they have the resources to protect and serve our community, and we could, will continue to make sure the men and women of the West Covina Police Department have the resources to protect this community, so thank you.
Okay, Brian, Brian, where's the real check? We don't want a fake check, okay? So show, show everybody the check.
I don't have a card, just a mint. Yeah.
So the check's right there, and I heard about you got already cashed.
You're welcome.
They say, "Morning, tell me if we got the check for..."
Thank you, Brian. Thank you so much. Yeah. Okay, thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, and now we move on to overall, okay, manager report. Yeah, go ahead.
You're going to forget me?
I almost.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have a couple updates tonight, as it's the first meeting of the year, just wanted to share some goals for the upcoming year and some immediate changes that are occurring in our community. We are starting weekly street sweeping in West Covina, and so that started yesterday, Monday, so our community be, and I think it's opportune time with the big winds coming through our community, so our streets, all streets will be swept on a weekly basis moving forward. Those streets that have posted parking restrictions will be enforced, and we will be continuing to work towards bringing back an ordinance to be able to enforce all street sweeping in West Covina. So we will, you'll see the street sweeper on your streets moving forward on a weekly basis. Next, thank you guys for coming. It's a little bit windy out there and a little bit dangerous, but just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware there's a strong wind advisory, and if you, there's a down power line or, you know, who to call if you see any of these concerns coming up because of the strong winds tonight. As always, please stay safe, if you can, stay indoors and avoid unnecessary travel. Secure loose and outdoor items, if you can, ahead of time, but I guess it's kind of late right now. Tree, trim your tree branches near your home and your power lines, and then just make sure that you have an emergency pack at home, you know, an emergency kit with essentials like flashlights, batteries, and non-perishable foods. So hope everyone stays safe tonight. A couple new things as we move forward, we have some new businesses coming into our city. Toyota dealership has relocated from their existing location off Azuzan Garvey to Garvey and Citrus, to the former Nissan dealership. So that opened December 26, and we're looking at a grand opening February 2025, and we'll be making sure to invite everyone for that grand opening. In addition, Mercedes-Benz will be relocating from its current location to the now vacated Toyota site, and so the, the plans went to the planning commission, and they will be coming before the city council February 4, 2025, and they're hoping to have that new completed dealership early 2026. We're also having a grand opening for Urban Cafe at the Plaza West Covina. The grand opening is January 10, this Friday at 10:00 AM, and it's at the Plaza West Covina Mall. It's next to where Jen Creek and Bark BQ is. We're also having Tain Feng Dumpling House at Plaza West Covina, which is under construction, and we're also going to be welcoming Einstein Bros Bagels at the Heights Shopping Center. We're also going to be moving forward with bringing technology and advancing technology in West Covina. One of the big things that the community or that the city has been working on is modernizing our platform for permitting and payment solutions, so that's going to facilitate all of the development within the city, so it's going to be online submittals for our permits. We also got approval from the council to move forward with reinvigorating, re-improving our city website, including making it more ADA accessible and more user-friendly for the community. We're also looking at desktop replacement program 2025, so that all of our employees are up to date with the necessary technology to better provide service to our residents. Another project that we are working on is a citywide ADA transition plan. That was something that we had opened a survey for input in December. We received six responses, so the consultant is going back to draft the self-evaluation and transition plan, which will then come back for additional public comment. We're looking to take that, would eventually come back to the city council for adoption. A couple big projects, there are capital improvement projects that are happening in the city. We are completing the senior center roof replacement at our senior center, and that should be wrapping up the end of the month. Our annual concrete and sidewalk and carbon gutters, this is where we go out and repair unsafe or hazardous sidewalks for our community members. That will be done end of this month, as well as our street, residential street rehabilitation project. We are moving forward with Fire Station 1. We are currently in the design phase for relocating the fire station to the adjacent area on the corner of Garvey and West Covina Parkway. We are moving forward with our traffic, citywide traffic signal improvements and completing the Azuzan Sewer Lift Station. We are looking also to do improvements at Friendship Park, bringing the facilities to standard and update public restrooms to provide access to clean and working facilities. We are also looking to add new LED lights at Cortez Park and Senior Center, Cameron Park, Elster, Shadow Oak, and Palm View, to provide better lighting in our community parks. That'll be done by summer 2025. Moving forward with the citywide pedestrian vehicle traffic safety improvements, also completing the fires, the improvements to the fire stations, which includes the flooring for Stations 2 and 4. We're also looking to add LED lighting to the Cortez Park pathway lighting, and that will be done in spring of 2025, and we're looking as part of the ADA transition plan to start with some of the transition improvements here in City Hall, including the chambers to make it more ADA accessible for our community members. Then, I'd like to share, we have dates for our coming events for the year, so if you want to participate in any of our events that we hold annually, please check our website. This is just the first six months of the year, the events that we're going to be hosting, so there's no excuse not to attend any of our events, they're all going to be on our calendar with dates. The upcoming events this month are the MLK Day, the 26th Annual San Gabriel Valley Tribute to MLK Day. It's Monday, January 20, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM here at the Civic Center, followed by the Cortez Park Community and Senior Center Open House on Friday, January 24, between 12:00 and 2:00 PM at the Cortez Community Center, and then the Spring Festival, which the dates are March 29 and 30. So like I said, no excuses not to attend, you guys all are aware of the dates now and have been officially invited. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, council have any question, any comment? Okay, I just want to say thank you so much, the city managers, and, and I hope 2025 is the year of action, okay, and we done a lot of thing, but we want, and we discuss a lot of thing, but we want the solution and action to deliver what the council vision and what we approve upon. So that's what the wish of 2025. Thank you. Okay, now we move to oral communication. We will now move to oral communication. If anyone would like to address to council, please fill out the yellow, okay, speaker card and submit to the Assistant City Clerk. When you near UNM being called, okay, please start line up in the center row, and the time will start when you reach the podium. And the request to speak and agenda item will be heard prior to the request to speak on non-agenda item. So, and how many speaker we have?
Four speaker cards, Mayor.
Four speaker, okay, go ahead.
Our first speaker is John Shoemaker, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Wen Wen Zong.
So many things I can talk about, but I'll keep it to a couple of them. First, I want to congratulate our new chief on his promotion, and the prayer is appropriate for God to help you do your job, because the first time you go outside the box, you're going to get fired. You have, you have two strikes against you. One of them is consul, which is unfortunate, but you can count on whatever I can do to support you, because I know you're a good man and will try your best. But that doesn't necessarily stand up with our mayor, how well you do, you try to do your job unless you follow his directions, which is completely and totally unfortunate from that manner. And those of you who are sitting there smiling, you know damn well it's true. Don't tell me otherwise. The other thing I'd like to know is where the money, the $20,000 came from, you know, that type of thing, because the person who presented the $20,000, you know, has been well-known and it's been very well-publicized that he worked for and was a senior executive of an organization that had ties to drug cartels. So, it'd be nice if you'd be able to, you know, show where the money actually came from, so we're not getting the money from places that we don't want the money coming from, you know, as, as in the past, you know, just magically appears. Also, as we go through things, I said, you know, hopefully does, you know, that he works, he's a good man. I think he'll, our new chief will do his best, but then you can get fired because you didn't introduce a certain individual on City Council first. Introduce somebody else instead or before him. So, you know, when you have an ego like that, it's hard to do what, what, you know, the new chief knows he has to do and wants to do. It's just a matter of people are going to allow him to, to do it. That's basically all I'm going to say right now, but I do request, would you direct an officer to escort me to my car? Because there's a restraining order with the person who's in this room, who purposely walked right by me, stopped for a second, looked at me, and then looked away, and he wasn't keeping his 15 yards as required by court order. So, I request that somebody walk me out, because I do not want to have somebody attack me. Thank you.
R. Robinson. R. Robinson, followed by Wen Wen Zong, followed by Bill Elliott.
Good evening. Speaking of pedophilia and child trafficking, during the holidays, I stumbled onto a tune. The way to find this, it's a tune on YouTube. The title of the song is "Modern Day Holy War." The woman that wrote the lyrics lives in Orange County. I think part of the lyrics is "A drag queen in every school." Anyway, her name of the song, the singer is Nicole O'Grady? O-N-O, no, I said O'Grady, no Grady, you know, yes, no. N-O-G-R-A-D-Y. I use, I searched for it on DuckDuckGo, but I stumbled on that. It's, covers child trafficking among other things. Anyway, the second topic, the COVID truth is finally coming out. Doctor and Colonel Teresa Long, a respected U.S. military officer, her patience fly equipment for the U.S. Army, recently testified in court about what the COVID jab really did to military men and women who dedicated their lives to protecting America. Miscarriages, cancer, neurological disorders skyrocketed after the experimental vax mandate was enforced. Neurological problems alone increased tenfold. Deaths from the vax exceeded deaths from COVID itself among military members. My past comments about the bird flu may have, may be incorrect. Alex Jones is saying that the next bioweapon that's going to come in a couple of weeks is something called HMPV, and you should be okay if you take a skeptical view of government orders, just healthy skepticism. But back to Teresa Long, it gets worse. Doctor Long revealed she was pressured by high-level officers the night before her testimony. They ordered her not to share her findings in court. Through tears, she said, "I have so many soldiers being destroyed by this vax. I have nothing to gain and everything to lose by talking about it, but I'm okay with that because I'm watching people get destroyed." She just had to use her voice to, I mean, the truth about the COVID scam is, the evidence is out there, and the second go-around, not as many people will probably be suckered in. Anyway, my message for West Covina residents is to maintain peace and moderation this year despite the many provocations that may occur. 2025 will be the year of false flags, deceptions, Operation Northwoods, fake terror campaigns, provocations, and trickery. Try not to respond with activism. It's, it's, it's an illusion, and it'll pass if you maintain a calm state of mind and don't allow ourselves to become targets. You can remember the tragedy at Kent State, Ohio during Vietnam when college students were gunned down by live fire by our own National Guard. In event organizers may be rogue elements of the government, military, intelligence, deep government, or lawless lone actors. Journalist Derrick Rose examines the institutions and individuals who attempt to manipulate our world for their own benefit. There's this website, you won't need a college degree if you study this website, thepyramidofpower.net. Anyway, that's some amazing education. Why did National Guard units possess live ammunition during college protests? So, this year, we'll, we'll have improved odds of mass casualty events. There's a voice-to-skelld technology. If you don't have a security clearance, you probably never heard of that technology. Intelligence agencies have many psychosocial techniques to manipulate people that have escaped public awareness.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Appreciate. Happy New Year. I see you next time. Okay, next speaker, please.
Wen Wen Zong, followed by Bill Elliott.
Good evening, honorable mayors, city council members, Ms. City Manager, staff, and the members of the community. I'm Wen Wen Zong, West Covina Library Manager. First of all, I wanted to say Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, too.
Well, I would like, I wanted to tell you that I'm retiring January 12th.
What?
Which is this weekend, and I just wanted to take tonight's opportunity to thank you. Thank you so much for all the support you gave to the library, and thank you so much. And I, I've been working with, at West Covina Library for the past 15 years. I, I really love my job. I love my work and am very proud of it, and I truly, truly enjoy serving the city, serving the community, and serving our residents every day, and I feel blessed working for West Covina. Thank you again so much for everything you do for the library, and thank you for using the library. Well, in transition to a new permanent library manager, Ms. Joanna, Ms. Joanna G. will serve as an interim library manager, and Joanna is currently a DWD library manager, and DWD library right now is temporarily closed to afford refurbishment, and so Joanna will also oversee West Covina Library. Thank you so much, Joanna.
Next speaker, please.
Bill Elliott.
Sorry about that. Good evening, City Council. It's a great day in West Covina today. City manager's talking about technology in the city. I'm so happy the city is embracing as much technology as we can, make life better for the people of West Covina. You know, Zoom is a very great thing, and you can accomplish a lot on it. I want to congratulate Tony Wu on taking the helm of the city, the SS West Covina. We're in good hands. Your second time as mayor, I know you're going to do a great job to Tony. Of those of you who don't know Tony very well, you might think you know him, but maybe you don't know as much as you think you do, and this is the hardest-working mayor in the San Gabriel Valley. This guy busts his tail for West Covina almost every day, and I really admire him a lot, and he deserves the credit, and congratulations, Tony. Also, I want to congratulate our newest councilman, Councilman Brian Gutierrez. You know, West Covina has two disabled people on our city council. That says a lot about our city, about who we accept and who we love and who we elect, and it's a really great thing. And Brian, the honeymoon's over. It's time to, to put your nose to the grindstone and really do great things for the West Covina, the city of West Covina, that I know you're going to. Really, congratulations. I know it was a hard-fought campaign, and you deserve it, so congratulations, too. And last but not least, I'd like to congratulate my beautiful wife, Ginger, on her reelection in District 3. It was a tough-fought campaign, and she worked very hard, and you know, when I hear Rea sing tonight, it brought me to tears, and you know, the councilman in the 3rd district worked so hard for her, for the district, for the people in her district, and she loves West Covina. As a matter of fact, she wrote that Bless West Covina song, and I helped her a little bit, but she loves the city and she embraces everything good and great about the city, and she's always trying to make it better, and I really admire her, and congratulations on your reelection, honey. And let's see, Chief Cortina, wow. We are so blessed to have Tony Cortina at the helm of our police department now. He is a great man. He's an honorable man. He's humble, and he's a great husband and a great daddy, and his, even his son's a police officer, and we are so lucky to have him in this city. And, you know, I, I don't speak for the city council, but I'd be very surprised if anybody ever fires Tony Cortina. Tony will likely be chief as long as he wants to be chief, and he has the respect of the men and the women of his department. I don't think a vote of no confidence in the 90 percentile range is coming anytime soon for Chief Cortina. He is a really worthy candidate for this job. It's good to see those four stars on his collar. We'll miss Chief Bill and congratulate him on his retirement, but it's a new day in West Covina. It's a new day on the city council. We have so much to be thankful for. We have such a great police department and fire department, and I'm not just saying that. These men and women that, that work for this city to protect us, they are top tier. They really are, and if you get a chance to thank any of them, do so, because, gosh, I've met some arrogant cops in my time, but I, I can't remember the last one I met that was in West Covina. They are all very humble and very dedicated to the job they do, and we're lucky to have them. And the last few seconds, I just want to also commend our city staff. They cleaned up so much of the hills. The hillsides are all cleaned up now. They look so great, and the transients can't hide there anymore. And who's the chief of code enforcement? Mylan. Thank you, Mylan. You do such a great job, and we're so fortunate to have you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. And the city manager want to respond to all of the speech?
Thank you. Just wanted to congratulate Wen Wen on her retirement and welcome Joanna to represent the library here. We expect you at all our council meetings to give us updates on the library, and I believe that was it in response to.
And the council, you want to say anything? If not, I'm going to say something. Okay, and I want to thank Wen Wen Zong, okay, and you're like a family, and I see you all the time, even the pandemic 2020 when I was mayor. You're here, Zoom, you show up, you share with us and how to get a book during that time, okay? So, you're so dedicated to your job, and it's really difficult to see you leave us. I don't think you should retire. West Covina Library will allow you just like an empty shell, okay? And maybe I need to talk to the county to try to give you a raise or something to keep you, but really thank you for your dedication to help us, to help the resident. You always come over here almost every meeting. I often see you miss one meeting and tell us about what you offer, what your library offer, even for the three years you're now opening, but you still offer something, something, okay? So, but, but I want to say you're so dedicated to your job, it's really, really difficult to say goodbye. Hopefully, you continue to come back to see us, and we see you in the library, but thank you for your service. Thank you so much. And we move to consent calendars, and council, any of you want to approve anything? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll briefly pull consideration of authorization of purchase food from U.S. Foods.
That's item 3.
Item.
You want to pull it?
Or 3. The 2, right?
It's only 2?
Number 2, yes.
You want to pull number 2?
Yeah, briefly.
So, I have a motion to approve for item number 1? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do I have a second? Okay, go ahead. Roll call, please.
Can I get a confirmation on the second, please?
Oh, you got 5 forward. Which one?
I'll second it. Thank you.
City Councilwoman Diaz?
Yes, I have a motion by Councilmember Gutierrez and a second by Councilwoman Diaz to approve Agenda Item Number 1. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Okay, item number 2, okay, council member?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for our city manager. Can you explain why Section 2-335 of the West Covina Municipal Code was, was used for this specific contract? And just to elaborate, is the purchases made using another government or public agency's contract or substantially the same terms are exempt from competitive bidding?
So, if I, the contract here we used was already done, gone through competitive bidding. We piggybacked off of another contract, and I believe it's through, I don't know if Roxanne, you know the answer off the top of your head, or Suzie, if you want to come up, that we piggyback off of another contract that the state uses.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Yes, so to answer your question, we piggyback off of a state contract where that allows for us to use U.S. Foods to purchase all of our raw foods for the congregate meal program at the senior center.
Great, great, and you guys are all happy with that? Happy with all those services you've been getting from them?
Absolutely.
Great, great, okay.
Makes it easy to just, you know, do business with U.S. Foods directly and their preferred vendor with the state.
Great, great, sounds good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That's all my questions.
Thank you.
So, you satisfied?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gutierrez and a second by Councilwoman Diaz to approve Agenda Item Number Two. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Yes.
Item passes 5-0, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we move to department matters regular, okay, regarding the consideration of appointment of our police chief. Okay, and who could present this?
I will.
Go ahead.
Mayor and council members, before you tonight is the appointment of Antonio Cortina as West Covina's next police chief. With the retirement of Chief Richard Bell, the city conducted a recruitment for the city's next police chief. And acknowledging the tremendous talent that we have in-house, an internal recruitment was conducted. I interviewed, after interviewing the eligible applicants, before you tonight, I am recommending the city council to approve the appointment of Antonio Cortina. He has 28 years of law enforcement experience and a distinguished record of leadership, service, and community engagement. He is the epitome of what you would want in a police chief. He leads with integrity. He has visionary thinking of how ways, innovative ways to improve the police department. He is one of the most collaborative people I have ever worked with. He is always there, willing to help any other department in the city. He's also demonstrates empathy, yet holds people very accountable to their roles and their promises that they make. And one of the strongest things about him as the next chief is that he strongly believes in community engagement and I think that you can see that evident in the number of people that are here to support him tonight.
Thank you, city manager. It's a very emotional speech. You bring tears to my eyes. Okay, and city council, do you guys have a comment or a question? Otherwise, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll fight for the second. Okay, roll call, please.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gutierrez and a second by Mayor Protem Lopez Viado. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
I'll just make a comment before I vote and I'll just say it's an honor and privilege to cast my vote of a yes for Antonio Cortina for all the good he'll do for our city. So yes.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Definitely yes.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and motion approved.
We would, we would like to now call him up to do the badge pinning and swearing in ceremony. Swearing in first and then the badge.
Yes, swear in. Do we have an honor to know the judge name? You want to announce? We have honor to have a.
Judge Joseph?
James.
The family could go.
The Judge James?
Judge Joseph. I'm sorry. Judge James Copeland.
It's our honor to have you doing West Covina.
Please raise your right hand. Antonio Cortina. Please repeat after me.
Aye, Antonio Cortina.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, well and faithfully.
And that I will, well and faithfully.
Discharge the duty upon which I am about to enter.
So Chief Cortina, you want to make a speech?
If we could have Richard Bell come up.
And give them the mic.
You're chief for a second here. Well, good evening, council. Good evening to all the residents. It is a very good day. The support is awesome and it's, it's time, you can feel it. West Covina is getting ready to move into a different.
Take out the mic, please. We cannot hear you.
West Covina is getting ready to move.
Oh, better now.
Into a different direction and I'm excited about it. I'm excited about it. I do want to say a couple of things to the family, though. First of all, congratulations, Tony. And to the Cortina family, he's going to need that support, right? Talking to someone who who just finished, right? He's going to need some forgiveness. He's going to need some time, right? And since this is a strong law enforcement family, I think you already know that, but it's going to be important that he has that Cortina support, like I've seen it over the years. And I think that's going to be awesome. We started our careers together in San Marino and I have to say that the reason I'm here, or at least the reason I got here at the time I did, was because of this man. We were doing patrol, it was night shift. We're in the city of San Marino, it's only four square miles. So you can generally look from one end all the way to the other. He was at one end, headlights, I was at the other end, headlights, and we thought it was going to be a good stop. So we raced towards each other to find out that, yeah, it was us. So, you know, Tony was like, well, Rich, I think it's time that we go to a place that's going to give us a little bit more. Like our motors run pretty fast, like this is getting a little old. Nothing against San Marino, great city, gave me my start, but in that moment, I was the one that was afraid. I was like, no, man, I just got here. I'm not going anywhere. He was like, no, I'm going, Rich. And so he put his app in and he was on his way. About three weeks after he put his app in, yeah, I decided, well, I'll put my app in too. And I'm three weeks behind him and I'm thinking, okay, we'll both get over there. Well, when it came time to get hired, he had some family issue or something that was going on where he couldn't do his medical and his psych and I was the willing participant. I was like, I'll do that for you. And so I actually jumped ahead of him. And so we tease each other about this all the time because I'm 325 and he's 326 and he thinks this should be the other way around. Hey, it's one of those things, right? When we worked Southside, you guys remember Miami Vice? Some of you younger guys probably won't remember that, but Tubbs and Crockett, you're looking at us, that's us. The only problem is, I think Tubbs looked pretty good and he had curly hair. Well, as you can see, I don't have curly hair, but I'm gonna take it anyway. We didn't chase down any big drug dealers, but we had a lot of fun Southside. We had a lot of fun. And just to tell you a little bit about Tony, you know, way back then, all we wanted to do is police work. Like we didn't care about the politics, we didn't care about anything. We just wanted to get out there, get in our patrol cars and we just wanted to do police work. But he was always thinking ahead. And if you know anything about the Southside, there's a bunch of homes down there and then there's a bunch of what we call paseos. Those are little, they're not alleyways, but they're walkways between the homes. The idea was great back when they built them. The problem is the bad guys thought they were great too because they were using them to commit crimes and run through and get away from us, right? And so all the streets on the outside had names on them, but none of the paseos on the inside had names on them. And Tony came up with the idea, I'm gonna give you credit, Tony. Tony came up with the idea, hey, what if we put names on the inside of the paseos to help us? So when we are chasing someone and we get in the middle of those paseos, we can actually put out a location and someone can find us. That was Tony's idea. I just jumped on board and got some of the credit. I'm, you know, it's good. But Tony, I appreciate that. And this will be the last story before I actually say a couple of things is, if you guys notice, I prided myself on being fit at one time. It's not that I don't now, but you know, when I finished professional football, I was really fit. And Tony asked me one time, he goes, hey, I want to get fit and lose some stuff and do all this. And I told him, I said, well, he asked me, well, you know, I need to buck up a little bit. So I said, well, yeah, you know, I remember when I was in Pittsburgh, I was 190 pounds, I was trying to make the team. And so I would order a cheeseburger pizza every night and I would eat it because I needed to gain some weight. I said, I believe you could do that. Might want to try In-N-Out, that might work. So Tony decides to do that. I don't know how far he got, but all I know is he was pretty upset after he had gained the wrong pounds and everything. He came back and he wasn't very happy. I didn't mean it like that, I just, you know, it just came out that way. But anyway, we had some great times. Well, you're looking at a very compassionate person. Tony's a very community oriented person. He's a problem solver, very easy to talk to, very easy to get along with, and I think he's going to do West Covina proud. So Tony, I just have a few things to say to you. I think this is a remarkable achievement that reflects not only your dedication to serving the community, but also your leadership abilities and commitment to upholding the law. Your years of experience, your dedication to education, and your unwavering passion for public safety have helped prepare you for this vital role. And we are excited to see how you will lead the department into the next chapter. As chief, you will have an opportunity to make a significant impact, not only on the police department. Lost my place here. I'm sorry. Not only on the police department, but also on the lives and citizens and to continue to foster a positive relationship between the police force and the community. Your vision for community engagement and your innovative crime prevention strategies that you will bring will surely help in enhance the trust and cooperation within the neighborhoods that we serve. I believe that under your guidance, Tony, the department will continue to thrive and build and the city, and build the city to a safer, safer place. Once again, congratulations on this impressive accomplishment. We look forward to witnessing the positive changes that you will bring to the city of West Covina. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, you have your new chief.
I'd like to call a former West Covina chief, Frank Wills, to the stand.
Thank you. Good evening. You know, I've had, hi, Tony, I've had the pleasure of knowing and working with Chief Cortina, actually since he was a high school senior in the city of San Marino, where he's an outstanding honor student, a championship wrestler, a lot of people don't know that. One of the most unique individuals I've ever worked with. Even as a 25-year-old kid, every assignment he had, he focused on, number one, mastering the assignment. How can I do it better? How can I be more effective? How can I better protect the community? It's so unusual for a young person to be thinking that way. He's excelled in every assignment he's had. There's been comments tonight, Bill Elliott said he's a visionary. He is a visionary, way ahead of his time in so many areas. He was smart, he can work with the community, he's a leader, he's an administrator. But I think of Chief Cortina's career and I'm reminded of a press conference that former President John F. Kennedy had way back in 1960. He's getting ready to appoint a new Postmaster General of the United States. At the press conference, the president was asked, are you going to hire a Postmaster General with a political background or a business background? And the president responded, well, I'm actually thinking about hiring somebody with a post office background. And, and sometimes, sometimes in some cities, not this city, they make a selection as chief and they're looking at, is he a good administrator? Is he a good PR guy? Can he do a budget? And sometimes they forget that what police officers really want is a cop's cop. That's why you have half the leadership of Southern California, not just here at Pac to the Gills, but in the outer lobby as well. They're here for Tony Cortina because he's a cop's cop. For those of you that don't know, he's worked detectives, he's supervised detectives, he's worked patrol, he's supervised patrol officers, he's done trainee, spent 20 years, almost 20 years as a SWAT team. Much of that is a SWAT team leader. He commanded our major narcotics unit. He's brought in millions and millions of dollars to the city of West Covina, saving the taxpayers' money. He is absolutely a police officer's police officer. A lot of people don't know that he has black belts and multiple martial arts disciplines. He's in the Hall of Fame of two international martial arts organizations. He has taught defensive tactics to police, law enforcement agencies across the United States and internationally. He is respected throughout Southern California. You have absolutely hired yourself an ace. Your family, if you understand the sacrifices, if you think it's been tough, it's going to get more difficult. He's going to be called out on Christmas, family birthdays, good luck with the Fourth of July with the family. It's just, it's going to be a 70-hour week from now until the day he retires. That's just the way the profession is and you have just the man to do it. I'm going to conclude with my favorite all-time chief, Tony Cortina, story. And this was when he's, I know this embarrasses him, I've told it a few times over the years, but it's still my favorite. So most of you know, even the civilians, that to be hired as a police officer in California, you have to take a psychological assessment. It's a grueling process, there's written exams, there's oral exams, there's IQ tests, there's practical scenarios, and that's really the gatekeeper to profession, to the profession. If a psychologist does not approve you, you don't get to become a police officer in this state. But Chief Cortina is the only person I've ever worked with in my entire career that got his psychologist fired. And then, then police recruit, Tony Cortina, we got his psychological assessment back and he passed with flying colors, but at the end of the assessment, they always came out with possible concerns. And the concern they had about trainee Tony Cortina is he may be too intelligent to be a police officer.
Oh, my gosh.
What we did, I got together with the city manager, we adjourned in a closed session with the city council and we decided to fire the psychologist and hire a psychologist that actually wanted to hire smart police officers. So I congratulate city manager Pauli Morales, the city council, members of the community for being willing to hire a very intelligent chief, please, Tony Cortina. Tony, good luck to you. Very happy for you. Tony, good luck to you, very happy for you.
So, chief, you want to make a speech?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, and members of the community, and family and friends. I'm just, I'm just so completely humbled to be here and see all of you here, it means the world to me. Kinda speechless, actually, for a second here, looking at all of you here. I just wanna say that I'm truly honored and humbled to stand here before you today as your new police chief. It's a privilege to serve and protect the city of West Covina, and I'm excited about the journey ahead. I wanna thank our city manager, Paulina Morales, for your trust and believing me to be successful in this role, and I look very much forward to collaborating with you and working to make the department and the city great. To the city council, I thank you for your trust in me, and I also look very much forward to collaborating to make West Covina the safest city and provide the best service possible. Pastor Kelly, I wanna thank you for that amazing invocation today, thank you very much, and thank you for always being a great friend and support to our police department during good times as well as difficult. Chief Wills and Chief Bell, thank you both for your kind words. I have to say that this is the most relaxed I've seen Chief Bell in like 10 years. I guess I got something to look forward to when I retire here. I wanna thank my parents, my mother lives in my heart every day, she's no longer with us, but my father, Gabriel Cortina, is here. My father Gabriel's, you know, taught me how to live a good life and get through challenges. My father migrated here from Mexico when he was a young boy and grew up in Los Angeles, and he became the Assistant Superintendent of Los Angeles School District and retired as the Deputy Superintendent for the State of California Department of Education. And my parents taught me the important values such as integrity, empathy, courage, strength, and to live with the heart of a servant. Those values shape who I am today as a leader, so thank you, Dad. I wanna, I'd like to recognize and of course thank my wife Tracy for her unconditional support and love. Tracy's a retired police officer with four years with LA County Sheriff and 12 years with the city of Glendora, and she never complains about the callouts I go to, she's always supportive with that, and my phone rings seven days a week, and she 100% supports me in supporting the community and in the department, so thank you, love you sweetheart. And I also wanna acknowledge my four children. I have Antonio Cortina here, will you stand up, Antonio? Antonio served five years in the 82nd Airborne in the US Army, and he's now a Los Angeles police officer serving in the 77th Division. And I have my son Brandon Cortina here. Brandon's a recent graduate of UC Santa Barbara with his degree through their very, that's right, very challenging economics program with a minor in history. And I have my son, my son Cameron. Very proud of Cameron, he's a very well-behaved young man. And he is an honor student, I'm very proud of him. And I have my little beautiful Princess Chelsea here. And she's, I'm not just by, she's the sweetest thing ever, and she's also an honor student and just the most kind little girl I've ever met. I also have my brother Gabriel here. My brother, my brother's been a great mentor of mine throughout my entire life, and, you know, he was the one that got me into wrestling and martial arts and music and all that, so I'm always grateful to my brother. And I have kinda two adopted brothers here, Dave Ling and August Doherty, who's over here. Thank you guys for being here tonight. And I have three sisters, my oldest sister Rayleigh's not here today, but my sister Patty is here, she's sitting over here. And my sister, my sister Janine, she's a retired LAPD officer as well. And I wanna thank my dear friends Carlos and Don LeFosse for your support and friendship. I don't know where you're at now, but there you guys are, thank you. And, you know, I couldn't be where I am without mentors, and everybody in this room has played a role in helping me develop into a leader and, but some mentors I just wanna briefly mention and thank are Chief Michael Hillman, Chief John Perez, Chief John Curly, Chief Colleen Flores, Chief Tony Miranda, Chief Ed Medrano, Chief John Distelrath, Captain Greg Hammond from CHP, and some lieutenants I worked with, Dennis Patton, Dave Lee, and Ron Mitchell, who is no longer with us, but he, his spirit lives with me every day as well. And I also wanna thank all the police chiefs that are here tonight. I know you all are very busy, I've learned that just from one day of sitting here, that it's a busy job, and I know you're dealing with the wind events right now and everything, but thank you so much for being here, and I'm very grateful for your support and look forward to working with you, all of you. And for all the other law enforcement brothers and sisters here from other agencies, thank you all so much for being here, your support just means the world to me. I also wanna thank Captain Ken Plunkett, really looking forward to working with you, I'm very grateful to our partnership, and I'm glad we're gonna do some great things together for the department and the city. And I also wanna thank my executive assistant Catherine Byudis, I'm very quickly running, she's actually the one that runs the department behind the scenes. Thank you for everything you do, Catherine. And I wanna express my sincerest gratitude to the members of the West Covina Police Department. I couldn't be more proud to lead the most talented group of professionals, and together we're gonna accomplish great things for the department and the community, and I assure you that I will dedicate myself 100% to you guys anytime 24/7. I also wanna acknowledge the entire city of West Covina staff and the great work they do. I really value our collaboration, and I'm confident that by working together, we can make West Covina the best possible city. And to the community, I'm gonna briefly describe my leadership style and values, but if there's one thing that you walk away with here today, it's that we, the West Covina Police Department, we work for you, and we are here to serve you. I've always felt so honored to serve and protect this great community, and I take pride in wearing the badge that I wear every day when I serve. I want you to know that the badge that every West Covina officer wears, it's a symbol of public trust, and that trust is the most important thing to maintain and build. As I step into this role as the police chief, I'm reminded that policing is not just about enforcing laws, it's also about building relationships and fostering trust. I believe that a strong partnership between police and the community is essential for creating a safe and thriving environment for all. Together, we can achieve more than we ever could alone. I want to ensure you that my commitment to transparency, professionalism, and accountability will be at the forefront of my leadership. I also wanna ensure that the West Covina Police Department is an organization that is sensitive to the needs of our community through embracing and practicing the tenets of procedural justice, treating those we contact with dignity and respect, providing quality and timely service, and by demonstrating the utmost professionalism in everything we do on a daily basis. It is my goal to create an atmosphere where every member of our community feels heard, valued, and safe. In the coming months, I'll be reaching out to various community groups, schools, and organizations to listen to your ideas and your concerns. Your insights are invaluable in shaping our approach to policing and community safety. I encourage open dialogue and invite you to share your thoughts with me. I also wanna emphasize the importance of community engagement. Our officers will be visible in neighborhoods, schools, and local events. We wanna build relationships beyond just responding to emergencies. We're here to support you, to listen, and to be a positive presence in your lives. And to everybody here tonight, I wanna thank you all for being here, your support, again it's just left me speechless, I'm so grateful to each and every one of you, and I'm just
Thank you, chief, okay, and please have a seat, okay, I want to have a council have a comment, but before I have a council to speak about, we want to wish you the best, but I want to, okay, thank a lot of guests, okay, we have a lot of distinguished guests, okay, and the first person I can recognize is our Covina Valley Unified, our superintendent, it is Altheimer, okay, would you please stand up, our superintendent, our Covina Valley Unified? Thank you so much to attend our city council meeting, and do we have our West Covina School District? Okay, Mike Flower, Mike Flower, where are you? Mike Flower is Covina Unified, elected board member, and I want to thank our Covina Valley Unified Board Member, elected, okay, and the Board Member Wright, would you please stand up? And Board Member Casera, okay, elected, Casera from Covina Valley Unified, and our West Covina resident, but thank you so much to showing up to celebrate a great day, and who else? I know we have a lot of commissioners over here, okay, thank you so much for showing up, okay, and with this wonderful day. Any people I missed, okay, and any people want to come up to speak, if you will come, we have plenty of time.
I don't think anyone else does.
Okay, no, 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 nobody wants to say anything? Okay, if no, are you sure? Going one, going two, the microphone right there, help yourself. You wanna say anything, yell at our chief, it's okay. Otherwise, I'm going to, okay, you wanna say something, yeah, go ahead. Hey, only praise, okay, no criticize.
Just wanna tell you, Tony, that's a great part of being a part of your family, and my dad would be so proud of you, man. He'd be so proud of you and everything that you represent. And I just know what kinda man that the city's getting, and trust me, guys, you guys are in good hands.
Thank you so much, another speaker, please, any people want to, our Chief Heman, you wanna say something? You wanna say something? Chief Heman? Yeah, no? Normally you speak a lot. Okay, any, any other people want to speak? Going one, going two? Hey, Bill, Bill, you can, you can make right, you cannot talk about COVID-19, okay?
No medical.
Okay, go ahead. Otherwise, I'm gonna mew you.
I'm better known as the village idiot, so this'll be, this'll be short. One of the councilmen shared with me that he, at his own expense, he's gonna attend the inauguration in a couple weeks, and I have contrary advice, I'm 3,000 miles away and it's, you know, the world is a little dangerous, you know, truck bombs and drones and, I just advise the people in West Covina to
About the chief?
Keep their distance from the inauguration. I think he should take the oath privately, I'm a little worried about
Thank you, Bill, that's very nice of you, okay? It's the shortest speech we ever have. Now, I wanna give to our city council to say something, and by the way, we have some reception outside, okay, cake, punch, okay, drink, okay, celebrate our new chief, and go ahead, who wanna go first? Okay, you two, okay, go ahead.
District One. Hello, I am Brian Gutierrez, your council member from District One. It is both an honor and a privilege to address you today. We gather to commemorate a historic moment in our city's journey, the appointment of Chief Antonio Cortina as the new leader of the West Covina Police Department. Chief Cortina's appointment marks a memento achievement, as he is the first Hispanic to serve as a police chief in our city's history. This groundbreaking moment reflects the diverse and inclusive values that we, as a community, prioritize, uphold here in West Covina. It represents not only a milestone for our police department, but also a celebration of our city's commitment to embracing diversity at all levels of leadership. I am generally optimistic about the fresh perspective that Chief Cortina will bring, enriched by his experience and cultural background. As Chief Cortina takes the reins of the West Covina Police Department, I have full confidence that he will lead our dedicated law enforcement officers with unwavering dedication and integrity. He has proven himself to be deeply committed to fostering strong community ties and ensuring that our officers are fully equipped to serve with compassion and respect. In today's world, with the dynamics of policing are ever-evolving, his proactive approach to integrating modern technology will undoubtedly enhance the effectiveness and efficiency of our law enforcement efforts, ensuring that we are better prepared to meet the challenges of the day. One of Chief Cortina's most memorable qualities is his passion for public service. His open-mindedness in tackling new challenges, his eagerness to explore uncharted territories will serve him well as he navigates the complexities of modern policing. And his deep commitment to his family and his loving wife and children offers insight into the supportive and value-driven leader he is. It is this combination of personal dedication and professional innovation that I believe will truly drive positive change within our police department. As Chief Cortina embarks on this pivotal chapter in his career, I encourage him to keep in mind the essential principles of policing that must guide his leadership. The imperative to protect and serve our community must be at the forefront of his mission. This includes upholding the rule of law, ensuring that justice is served fairly without bias, and holding all individuals, regardless of their status, accountable to the law. These core values will undoubtedly strengthen our trust between our police department and community, but also foster a safer environment for all our residents. In closing, I extend my heartfelt congratulations to Chief Antonio Cortina. May his tenure be characterized by success, wisdom, and unwavering dedication to the safety and well-being of the people of West Covina. Let us all come together to support him in his notable endeavor and wish him God's blessing as he leads our vibrant community toward a safer, more secure, and brighter future. My final words, I will say, is may God bless the men and women of the West Covina Police Department, and may God continue to bless the residents of West Covina and our new chief, Antonio Cortina. Thank you.
Well said, council member Brian Gutierrez, appreciate good speech, and next, wanna go first? Okay, Councilman Ollie?
Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I'd now like to take a brief moment, Chief Tony Cortina, to speak directly to you. It has been such an honor to have had the opportunity to get to know you over the past several years. I literally remember having met you for the very first time on Tuesday, August 2, 2022. That moment when I met you, the immediate thing that came to mind was the extent to which you were engaging and supportive and eager to hear ideas, and the extent to which you were ready to follow through on suggestions that are received by the community. And when I think about the times that I have spent with you directly, whether it be over a meal, or worshiping together, or traveling throughout our community and seeing one another and being with one another and being with one another in different settings, the thing that has been clear all from the beginning is how you have continually led with such heart and courage and conviction. And tonight, it is particularly fitting that your dad is here this evening because I'd also like to say a special thank you to him as well as posthumously to your mom. Your parents were the ones who raised, raised you to be the man that you are today. Through all of your different days that you have chosen to optimize your talents and abilities and skills for the good of others, you have blessed us not just here within the city of West Covina, but far beyond. You are, in effect, representative of, part of, the legacy of the Cortina family. And for that, I would like to thank your parents for what they did to make this day possible for you. And Tony, when looking also at the person you are, one who believes in strong community engagement as well as tackling every responsibility with a spirit of innovation, that is something to which I look forward as I think ahead to how this department will indelibly be impacted in a positive way because of your having ascended to serve as our new chief. Indeed, your legacy has been built on all those who served in your role as well as the teams that they led. And now, as you take on this role, I would like to join with others in inviting you to remember this night when you see the people who are here for you, who represent every part of this community. That type of unity and that pride in our city of West Covina may be bolstered further still by our optimism in all that you will do as our new chief. And I am further grateful to God for all of the things that you have done and will continue to do as you lead in empowering all of us to be at our very best and to rise to higher levels of success and unity following your noteworthy example. Congratulations, Chief Cortina, we love you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Canto. And now we go to the mayor, Proton, okay, Lopez Viado.
Thank you, Mayor. Full house, everybody. This is the first time I've seen everyone full from the stairs to the upper area. And it's not a controversy issue or they're here to fight. So that's actually pretty, pretty good. So I just wanted to say thank you. Throughout my years working here, I just wanted to say those who, you know, you could see those who came out to support. You, especially on this windy storm, traveling through all these, I mean, literally have to come and travel through here. I just wanted to say thank you for everybody who came out here. We can see that you are truly valued, you're fully respected, and especially loved, not just by your beautiful family, your friends, your supporters, and by this community. I do remember when we worked together a few years ago. We worked and I know, you know, he came over at our house. My husband was there and we were just like working on this plan to create a seminar and workshop for the community. And we developed the Women's Personal Safety and Empowerment Workshop. And that was a hands-on training where they learned about real-life scenarios. And actually, we have one here who was a participant in our program that, that time. And we had two police officers that heard about our program that came to this workshop because they were told by their chief that if that program is good, take it to our city as well. Well, it was a success program, everybody wanted it. Unfortunately, COVID hit, so we had to diverge. But that was a great program that we worked together. And then you're already in a lot of the events and programs here. You're, you're here day, night, we see you everywhere. I know we also worked on the biggest toy giveaway in the San Gabriel Valley area. And that was lines all the way through, you know, with Councilman Gutierrez. And, you know, I do remember you working that day and you brought your family, your wife and your daughter passing out those toys. So, you know, your family are very committed to us. And we thank you again, thank you for your sacrifice and working here in West Covina. So we, we greatly appreciated that. You know, the, you are dedicated, truly dedicated. You do serve and protect with high integrity. And we appreciate that. We are honored, blessed, excited, and extremely proud to have you and to actually call you our police chief. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Lopez Viado. Then we go to our councilwoman, Dea, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, I just wanted to say just welcome, just welcome you and just, we just can't wait. Chief Cortina, I have known you for several years, but I won't mention too much. But you've been a friend, not only a friend, but a colleague, I would say, because we get to work together. And when I became a councilperson, you have been very supportive. And we've worked together and we've talked a lot about how we can improve our city. And I noticed that you do love our city. You work hard to improve our city. You listen, you, I, you're the type of person that when you're, when we're, I'm talking to you, it, it seems like you treat me like nobody else is in the room. And that feels good. It, it makes me feel like you're listening to us. And I know that you do that with the community. And I'm positive you do that with our fellow officers. So I just want to thank you for that. I also want to say that when I was the Centennial Mayor in 2023, I chose you to be the employee of the year because you were, you're so good. Such a great employee, such a great police officer while back then, captain. And I just want to thank you for that. And I want to continue working with you. I also want to thank your, your wife who supports you so much, Tracy, and your beautiful family that has been there for you. And you have a lovely family. And I just want to congratulate you. And thank you for being a good person and a good officer and for loving our city the way we love our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Deas, okay? And you can see, chief, look at, everybody love you, okay? And you deserve this position, okay, and this promotion. But I, I want to say one thing is this, is basically we passed, I want to thank the Chief Bell, okay? And he passed pardon to you, okay? And we have, okay, Chief Heman, okay, same thing. You have so many of your predecessors coming, continue to help our city and continue to improve our city. I think this is our police department, I think it's so important and to put it together. And once upon a time, okay, and our police departments, okay, kind of in trouble, okay? And the rank and fire have 95% or something of a disapproval rate. And the morale is go down to the drain, okay? And then Chief Bell stepped in, okay, stepped up and to help to put this morale back. And now, okay, we stabilized, we have a great police department. Now you are the successor and to take over this great department, West Covina Proud Police Department. I think this is why we here as a taxpayer and the people elect us. And we want to do a great thing for our city. And we have to choose the right person to in charge. And you are the right person, okay? And by the Chief Bell and say highly about you. And my wife too, my wife say you are a great guy. My wife knew you more than, earlier than me. Okay, he went to the, the training class, okay? And, and I can ask her about her after that, okay? She know how to, okay, defense and how to punch, okay? And all from you, okay? So anyway, so I say, she say, go to do the dishes. I say, yes, man, okay? Because I know he learned Kung Fu from you, okay? And, and this is important to, you willing to spend your time and help the women, okay, about how to do the self-defense. And that's why my, my wife say highly about you, say great class and this and that. I think this is something you spend the time. And the more important thing is this, is the leadership, the leadership, okay? And you have the leadership and I talked to the officer, everybody say highly about you. Everybody say you're a great leader and you treat people with fairness. Your rank and fire love you. And then we talking about community, the community member love you because you went to talk to them. When they have issue, you will knock on their door and right away talk to them. And, and they say, hey, who is that person? This officer, I say, no, it's a captain or it's a lieutenant, okay? And he is a wonderful man. He said, yes, okay, he help us, he show up, he talk to us. So I want to thank you, represent our, okay, resident, that you spending your time, you willing to help, and we see the sincerity about you. And that's why you can see so many people over here, over here to say, great job, and we proud of you. So in conclusion, I don't want to take too much time because, okay, you know I can talk forever. Okay, but I want to say something is this now, okay, the burden on your shoulder, the West Covina safety is on your shoulder. And don't forget, we are number three most safest city nationwide, 100,000 population, and based on Vogue magazine. And hopefully you will help us to go to number one, the safer city. I know, I know, you say, Tony, you dreaming, okay? But you never know, okay? I think we have a great department and we promise you, a city council, we will find a budget to help you have a more force, to help more, to hire more officer. And I know that's what you want. And that's what we need, okay, to protect our city. So thank you so much and congratulations. I wish you the best. You need anything, we are here to help you. Thank you, congratulations. Okay, and we are going to continue to our program, this city business. And all this lovely family and guests, you are welcome to go to the community service. We have cake, right, city manager?
We have pastries and coffee.
Yeah, we have a pastry and coffee. You are welcome. And we have to continue to do our thing. And congratulations, thank you so much. Yeah, appreciate. Let's reset over, we will start the meeting. We moving to the council, okay?
I emailed them ahead of...
Hello? Okay, we will soon the meeting. Thank you so much. I'll see you guys later at the community room. Yeah.
Well, join the party right now.
Let's finish our meeting, please, okay? Let's go move on to next agenda. Okay, and let's go to the, to the council. Do we have any AB 1234?
No.
If none?
We're not going to hear you on YouTube.
That's okay, that's okay, that's okay. Congratulations, chief, okay? We will be outside, let's finish our meeting.
Esting, is it working?
The mic's not really working.
If everyone can move to the hallway.
Hello? Okay, and let's starting our council meeting. I think this is fine, I think this is okay. Can you close the door, please?
No. No Elliot.
Close the door, please.
If you guys can move outside to the lobby, the lobby area, please. If we can move down to the lobby.
It's the community room. There we go.
Thank you so much, appreciate, thank you. We still in meeting, okay? And now, let's go to the council request. And any of comment, a mother may I? Do we have any, who want to go first?
Go ahead, Ollie.
Okay, Councilman Ollie, please.
Thank you so much. Following the example of Councilmember Gutierrez, I've actually...
Hold on, I can't hear. Let me, let me close the gate. Would you please close the door, please? Yeah, we still have a duty, we still in meeting. Thank you so much.
I can hear you now.
They can hear me, okay? The door's closed. Thank you, officer. Okay, appreciate, okay. And go ahead, Councilman Ollie Canto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following the great example of Councilman Gutierrez, I actually, for the first time, have pre-written my mother may i's. And I don't have 15, I only have two. So I would like to ask the Assistant City Clerk, please, to read the first mother may I on my behalf.
The first mother may I, I ask that the council approve of a mother may I to direct city manager Paulina Morales to instruct staff to look into the feasibility of the city establishing a Section 115 pension trust intended over the long run to enable the city to meet all its pension liabilities as the city of Cypress is on track to do by 2030, having set up its fund in 2017. This should entail reaching out to Cypress City Manager Peter Grant and City Finance Director Matt Burton, gathering information about the nature of Section 115 pension trust and its investment returns in comparison to funds being managed by the state treasury and laying out various scenarios for the council to consider in order to improve our city's long-term financial health. This should be done by the second council meeting in March 2025.
By way of background, the, the Section 115 funds, pension funds, is something I read that Cypress did. There's a publication for, for the community to know called Public CEO, where we receive news about if different effective practices of the cities. And what Cypress has done is they had a ton of pension obligations. And so they set up a Section 115 pension fund. And now they're on track by 2030 to basically, because of their financial discipline, have, have optimized their, their ability to pay pension obligations. And so I'm just asking that staff look into the Section 115 funds.
I, I, okay, I don't quite understand about this pension mechanism. So maybe, city manager, do you understand what he's talking about?
I will, I believe so. He wants us to contact Cypress City and see what they did with Section 15 for their pension.
Cypress City, City of Cypress.
But what is that?
The, the Section 115 funds are basically where we take money, put it aside for, for reasonable investment purposes. Then the money is then grown. So then, that way, that money is then used to pay our pension obligations. And so it, it actually contribute, having a Section 115 fund would, would, from promising, promising practices, it has the potential for us to be able to meet our pension obligations without...
Got it, okay. This is a mother may I, so maybe we quite want to understand. And anybody have a question? I don't quite understand, okay? And about our finance director, so we can approve this for the mother may I? You want to explain to us what he talking about? Or, I don't know, you standing over there. So I was thinking about you want to say something.
So I am aware of what CalPERS offers as an investment option. It is something that's been on my radar and I've actually met with CalPERS about it. Off the top of my head, I wasn't, not sure if it was exactly Section 115 or a different trust option. The one that I was particularly looking at does not tie the city's funds so that we could take it out, but it still counts towards our pension obligations. So I am aware and will look into the council members.
Are you okay with his mother may I?
Yes.
Okay, so any people against this? Nope, okay. We approve this mother may I, have city looking to it. The finance directors, she, she say okay, meaning it's doable, looking to it. Okay, next one, please.
Thank you. I now ask the Assistant City Clerk to read the second and last mother may I.
I ask that the city council approve a mother may I to ask the city manager to instruct staff to look into existing practices, if any, concerning issuance of exemptions from parking tickets on street sweeping days for home healthcare workers who visit senior residents or residents with disabilities and to report back to us by the first council meeting in April 2025. Considering how a significant number of community members are from the senior population or have disabilities, if other municipalities have addressed this topic, it may be worth our identifying those approaches and subsequently to determine what may be best for our city.
And so it's about street sweeping?
It's, it's just to seeing what other cities are doing in terms of best practices with regard to healthcare workers who support senior citizens and people with disabilities where they happen to be visiting the different residents. where they happen to be visiting the different residents and what happens if there's a street sweeping that comes through that sort of thing I literally do not know the answer there could be no practices out there or there or maybe some cities might have some practices but just wanted the city to look into what the possibilities are without making any determination at all
I I I'm still confused you're talking about street sweeping when the caretaker parking over there that's
Yes yeah let's say there's street sweeping but they're not residents of West Covina but they're coming in and they're let's say the the street sweeper's coming along oh my gosh they're parked somewhere I literally don't know if what if or whatever we should do about that but because there are those who've expressed worry about
I I don't want to discuss this thing because this is mother may I the only thing is it's only couple hours so they can just move their car in some place so we can sweep the the water and we have to let the car park over there they is just deceiving what we're trying to accomplish is it's only couple hours so so I don't think we want to compromise or people not moving their car because they are taking care of senior they need to move their car in another they can just walk over there rather than be lazy want to park in front of the house so so I'm thinking about that they need to comply with our four hours window of move their car so they can be clean only couple hours right
I understand that but I but I just wanted to support those who were worried about their caregivers who come
And Mayor Poten
Uh thank you mayor um my concern is because the purpose of the street cleaning is to have the streets clean and if we do that then we're not serving our purpose they can if there's a accommodation needed of parking across the street or a neighbor or park blocking the driveway inside or something but we have to keep that open and consider it
Got it okay councilmember Gutierrez
Um my only concern is that to define a disability we might have to we get into a HIPAA issue and it might become a liability issue and I don't know if that's the best option especially right now when our streets are extremely dirty
Let's do this okay um councilman Kento let's street sweeping do first see how it goes because right now we don't have the signage post yet so and we see how it goes and in the future we did become a issue and that's we address the issue that time is that okay with you
Okay so I just I I reserve the a right to
Yes
To bring it back
Yes
At some future point to revisit this issue
Welcome to bring it back but but let's at least let the weekly sweeping roll out first and see how it goes
Thank you
Thank you so much okay and councilwoman Diaz
Um I I agree with you in terms of let the street sweeping process go and because we are gonna have some kinks
Correct
We are going to have issues where people are gonna be issued at least warnings so and we did discuss this we discussed that they will be giving them warnings so in this situation we might end up in a situation where a handicapped person or a caretaker ends up with the ticket and at that time then maybe we can
Yes
Address it
Yes
We'll deal with that at that
Very good let let the system roll through first let's see how it go weekly because we haven't do weekly for long time and now we roll back okay we come back went to clean the street and let's let's do it clean the street and then okay we post all the sign and make sure the people will move their car so we can really clean up the street and this is requirement sanitation for health issue we need to do it but thank you okay and thanks anybody want you have any more okay thank you so much and anybody want to do okay go ahead
Um I'd like to request that West Covina businesses are a priority and when it comes to city purchases services or anything that is being used I want to make sure that our sales tax are kept in our city revenue and that includes purchasing with a city credit card that they use it for West Covina businesses and you know if we do give out RFPs or anything higher points to West Covina privileged priority to our West Covina business and I'd like to also you know review our the municipal code if that reflects that with purchases as well as the purchasing procedures um yep that's one of
Okay um thank you Mayor Poten Lopez Fialdo I think this is a good mother may I okay if we encourage people to shop local the city doesn't shop local it doesn't make any sense okay so we city have to shop local if you want to buy the automobile the big item we should shop our local dealership okay and the shop around the RP we need to give our okay city a chance because that tax revenue is come to our city so we need to enforce like other city okay then all the purchase should be shop locally I I strongly support this okay and the councilmember Gutierrez
Yeah if if councilwoman Leti Lopez Fialdo was able to if it's okay if she expands her mother may I to also include a review of section 2-335 of the West Covina municipal code which is purchases made using another government's or a public agency's contract or substantially same terms are exempt from competitive bidding a review of that process if that's okay with you councilman
Very good okay and you okay with that okay
Same municipal code but he he just clarified which municipal code that is
Yeah he sound like a lawyer
Exactly
Okay and any other council want to input otherwise anybody against this okay no okay they passed okay and the city looking to the what the requirement we want to shop local and and our government city purchase should be locally okay thank you
Would like for this I mean if possible to begin by the next fiscal period which is July 1st so hopefully we can get this going and seeing that
No we should do it ASAP
Yeah well ASAP
We should do it like yesterday
Yeah
Okay so anyway okay so anyway do is the timely matter ASAP anything we can bring back to us so we can approve this okay for the ordinance okay and another one go ahead
Uh thank you mayor I have the second request is just I wanted the city to look into some project management software obviously we have tons of projects that are happening but it's just all over the place nobody knows what's going on and this is pertaining especially to the council all our mother may I's because there's things that I've made years ago that it's been forgotten and then another new council member comes in and brings in the same request that I've already requested one recent and I forgot what it was but I I put in this request 2019 oh yeah like the no solicitation that was I I placed that in 2019 where the city was already working with that getting the signs they even said the signs are ready it just needed for me to review and then gone
Got it
If we have a project management software to manage all the projects that we'd like to be seen
So basically let me abbreviate and what the requirement if I'm right okay basically your city manager to have a system that all the mother may I we request and all the project we request should be on some kind of okay spreadsheet so we can review it and you can review it when that thing should be done am I right Yeah they should have a program for that
It's a software project management
Which is not necessarily a spreadsheet right
Yeah which is a program
I mean it's preferably a software program because it also tallies and lets you know we're we just want to work smarter and just hard and it's just so easy that anybody could log in
Another thing is so we don't receive all these emails for
Yes
Hours about two years ago mother may I so okay so in that way we were all in the same page about the mother may I and that thing should be looking to it unless you have something different okay and no anybody against this nope thank you so much okay and the next one please no okay I know I know Brian's like okay I have a lot okay wait okay let's go to the councilwoman Diaz He has a lot
What I'd like the staff to do is look into a program or a some sort of mechanism that will help us with the parking permits for the restricted parking preferred parking permits that are issued throughout some of the some of the streets throughout our city because
Daniel
I know that some people have been you know taking pictures of them and using them or else applying for them fraudulently and and using them as their own parking permits on these restricted streets so if we can figure out a way that we can have maybe parking permits that are hanging on the windshield or something I I don't know I know that Compton because I talked to I had a meeting with Ms. Daniels and her neighbors and so she mentioned that Compton has a program so maybe we can contact someone from Compton that has this parking permit mechanism that they use to create their parking permits so we can have better control of that the other item is The litter bug or the litter um let's see fines for littering if we can work on trying to either find out if there's an ordinance that does not allow us to litter and if there's fines because you know there's a lot of littering and
Is this a second mother may I
Second oh oh okay sorry
Let's finish the first mother may I okay first mother may I regarding the parking permit and city looking to what is a way will be much more efficient with the parking permit and then then become visible maybe on the windshield or hang on the okay mirror or something and another thing is maybe city have to look into okay and the signage for the no parking area so have to propose over there so because I know Addison or okay some other okay agency remove all the signage and it didn't put it back and we request and put it back so in that way we don't have I think this is what your mother may I about right
Yes
So anybody against that
Mr. Mayor
Yeah go ahead
As a friendly amendment could could would would councilwoman Rosario Diaz be willing to also add asking staff to look into what are the existing penalties for people who are fraudulent with lying about actually having parking permits they actually don't have
Um so so basically if the fake
Right what are the
Parking permit
Or criminal penalties
Will be the penalty and fine for that so if city can just using the maybe the QR code okay and they can scan it right away can know this is a real one or fake one right now everything is like QR code that even the parking permit I think the possible is doable am I right city manager
I don't think we have QR cards
No right now the process is they get a piece of paper with a for a parking pass and that can be duplicated very easily so we have been looking at ways to
QR code
Uh not necessarily we're looking at ways where the the parking pass would be associated with the car's license plate and so there's that facilitates the process for enforcement for for our staff
So looking to what's more efficient way without the fraudulent or the fake okay parking permit at the same time and and try to install all the signage back this is a mother may I am I right okay and any okay go ahead
Yeah and I'll just piggyback on what the councilwoman Diaz said and Mayor Wu said is that I think a QR code or something that's efficient you know if they have to type in a license plate you're now burdening them with extra time they have to type that in so if we look at enhanced security measures reflected reflective thing on there somehow that is anti-counterfeit or 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 a scanning our code enforcement will be able to scan it and then it reports back that it's a valid license
Agree I I think the QR code or scan mechanism is so easy without typing it saves a lot of time for our code enforcement or parking enforcement to do the job so anyway just looking to the any new technology easy and to do perform their job am I right okay if if it's correct and anybody against this now whatsoever then it's approved and city looking to what we just mentioned about okay your next mother may I please you Uh yes is they have a period thank you so much
Yesterday no I'm just
What is the day you can perform maybe in February February meeting
At least at least provide us with some sort of a status as to what did you find did you find a place
Oh yeah we could probably do that by the end of February
Yeah bring back to city council to review and prove
Second meeting
Yep now second meeting
As an update where we're at what we do and what we can do
Right
No plus approval so we can exercise the permission not just review it it's just waste of time we want to get it done okay to perform so February 2nd meeting
So we want it on the agenda
Yes we want all the agenda not just review it I talk about 2025 is action year so we want action okay please okay so anyway and you okay then second second one please
Okay second one is the fine for littering
Is that including the panhandling
No that's that's another one
It's another one okay so okay littering fine and posted okay and then how we enforce that
People will report it
People report it
Can report it
I think for the littering even if they report it the officer can't that could be wrong that an officer can't give a ticket unless they personally see it themselves but you I mean you can it could be there but I don't know if the I know many years ago there was a big enforcement back then and you you any litter you were fined I don't know I haven't seen that recently going on but I mean I'm supportive of it
Okay I I think the only way is this okay Mayor Poten okay I think okay for example somebody threw the trash out of the window of their windshield of their car okay and okay you can take a pictures and then with license plate and with that possible we can pursue with that evidence but we need evidence so so and so we can post the signage but another thing is enforcement and how much I think city manager do we have that ordinance or city attorney we have that
We can we'll talk to PD and see what we do
Yeah we do
So let me ask you this is that a PD that would have to enforce it or can code enforcement enforce it
We'll see how they address it
Okay
Now but maybe we could use code enforcement
And most of the issues that they have this is where the apartments are at where people park there and they throw their trash out and clean out their car
Right
It's not the residents of the area
For example the motel have their guests throw the trash out to the neighbor can we enforce to the find the the motel owner make sense so I think there's
We'll see how they're addressing I'm sure they already know
Okay uh so the the thing will be the mother may I will be city looking to the fine and plus ordinance including how to okay enforce including with our code enforcement and the police officer to make sure that people know littering am I right
Yes
Okay uh the councilmember Gutierrez
Uh if just for clarification or make a comment too but if the councilwoman's fine with adding I we do have and we should have a municipal code about littering so I would say if we could if you could ask for it to be an increased fine increase the fine that we currently have
Okay but we don't know what the fine is well yeah we don't know what the fine
I think basically you're showing the is that
It was an example
Okay and looking to the the fine amount and with a resolution or the the coordinator to come back for us to approve am I right am I right
Yeah
Okay anybody against that and what is the date when you can do it city manager February 2nd meeting
We we still have another
Try your best
Can you give me March
March 1st meeting
Okay
Okay March 1st meeting okay we compromise and the number third one
Um the no solicitation signs if we can look into the ordinance about installing those or implementing those
Uh the street vendors is that the one that we
Well I don't want to put street vendors I just want to put I it's
No panhandling
Right right we already have an ordinance that and the state sent down a statute saying you got you can regulate the cities we we regulated it and we do have a no uh street vending on the medians and in certain areas of like that so it would be an enforcement issue I've discussed it with with Mylan Mylan's prepared to come talk to you and let you know what the status how he's handling it and why he's handling it the way he is
Okay
We've we've looked at this already
Right
We'll get you a report
So what what we're working on now is we need the signs we need them to be so that would be it wouldn't be a legal thing or
I don't know I think I will agree with city attorney is an enforcement issue okay because we see people zoom through between the car and do panhandling not only let to do say funeral this on that is kind of scam but where's our enforcement okay where is our code enforcement this and that I think we maybe need Mylan to come to talk to us so we maybe mother may I request Mylan to see how can we enforce make sense okay and yes go ahead you want
So what I'm I'm just saying is that he does enforce it I know he does he enforces any solicitations of flowers or signs for funeral you know getting donations for funeral I know he enforces that but I'm just saying that I'd like to have signs up in those areas so that people have knowledge it's there they have knowledge and they're still there so they're violating and if they keep doing it then maybe they can be ticketed ticketed or something.
Council member Gutierrez?
Instead of just letting them go like.
Understand, understand.
Yeah, so if, if the councilwoman was fine, adding to her motion or her Madam May I, the signage will be required to be posted in prime street locations.
Okay, you okay with that?
And also, Mayor, also, in other cities, their code enforcement is not the one citing people in the middle islands. It's usually your police department. So if we're going to invite code enforcement, invite your, invite our, someone from the police department to also represent the issue because in other cities, code enforcement is supposed to be for code issues, but this is a municipal law in prohibiting panhandling, which is a citation usually police officers are giving, but yeah.
And, and, okay, city attorney, how do you think?
This, this isn't our muni code. It is, it regulates street vendors and it does not allow them to be on the medians. I believe that's the issue. I can, and Mylan does enforce it strategically and he can come speak to you about that. We can look into placement of sign.
So you're talking about the code enforcement can do the job?
Yeah, code, but, but if police has the ability, certainly that would.
We need more, we need more police officer if we want them to do this.
Right.
So, 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 God, we're looking to it, have them to come to give us a presentation, but we, if we talk about panhandling, all the on-ran, off-ran, we have a regular clock in, clock out, a panhandler right there. And where's the enforcement? And that report many times because they trash the area, okay, they look horrible. So I think that will be looking to the enforcement, either police or coordinator to, officer to help us to make sure they don't, okay, do the panhandling and trash all the off-ran. You can see it easily every day. So anyway, let's move on. Okay, and, and so your Madam May I is basically city looking to and police of code enforcement to enforce and also to, to put the signage into the, all the major street, right? You guys okay?
Street locations, yes.
Okay, and nobody against this?
No.
Very good. Thank you so much. Okay, let's move on.
Mr. Mayor, just, just tying with, with that, and this is just clarity and only in preparation for possible Madam May I, but, but just wanted to ask the city attorney, what are the procedures for if, if private businesses put no solicitation signs up and they have 601 no trespassing paperwork with law enforcement? Can, does it then become a law enforcement action if people are considered acting unlawfully by soliciting on private property?
Yes.
Yeah, it would be a law enforcement matter in that if, if it's private property and they are hanging signs and it's noticed that way.
Okay, so, but that already exists. So that means that business, that private property owners right now have the right to put no soliciting signs on their property?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, they, I have a business and they want me to post a sign with no trespassing, but call our ordinance or that, that phone number, and then we can call the police, they will show up to arrest them. So yes, they, I think as long as they post the sign. Okay.
So just real quick, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, just with that, can we please instruct staff to inform, make sure to inform the businesses about that? Because I don't know if everybody knows that they have the ability to post those signs and, and what would be the penalties as a result of handling happen?
I think that should handled by our economy development manager, or our so-called West Covina Chamber. Okay, they should announce, send an email to everybody regarding what they should do, what they can do. So in that way, we can enforce the law. Yes, Brian Gutierrez, okay, and the council member?
Yeah, I was just going back to Councilman Diaz's Madam May I. So yeah, so if we could make sure code enforcement and representative of the police department come for that presentation.
Yes, so that will be, get this, we okay? Can we move on, please? Otherwise, we were stuck here forever.
Oh, I got it, yes.
You got it. Okay, thank you. And why is the due date? March first, March the first meeting? It's okay? It's this one easy?
Presentation, correct.
Yeah, this is presentation and then they can do the enforcement. Okay, you, you okay? You sure? You want more? Okay, otherwise, I know he has a lot, but I have a very easy Madam May I, I think, okay, otherwise I will, okay, wait for his, I don't know how many, 15, okay, today. So anyway, quickly, the first Madam May I I want to say is this, I want the city council to agree with me regarding the tragedy happened on this Cotest Street again on that curve. And we just want to, okay, instruct the city to have our engineer to look into the poster flashing yellow sign and to slow down the traffic. So we don't have any accident, okay, will happen again because this, it just happened way too often. Okay, so, and, okay, anybody against that? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, this is the first one, easy. A second one, it would be very simple too. And I want the city to look into the process to streamline a business application and to help our business because right now we have a lot of people complaining about our staff on the economy development, okay, and they're not responsive. So hopefully with this new manager coming in will help us to be more responsive, okay, and then help them, okay, to hold their hand, to help them to process and even the business license because right now we outsourcing, we want to make sure people understand we are welcome then, we will help them. With, that's why we set up the West Covina, okay, and chambers is to help the business, recruit the business, welcome the business and help them and have them to create job for us. So this is my, another Madam May I, any other, I think, you guys okay with that? Okay, see, it's very pointless. Okay, thank you so much. So city looking to the streamlined, okay, and we want periodically have our community development manager to report to us regarding how many businesses apply and how, what kind of a process, okay, that can help them streamline. And then, okay, some people complaining about our business license outsourcing problematic. Hopefully, we will can help them to resolve the issue. Anyway, and this is, everybody against, nobody against that, right? Thank you so much. And, and I want this one in February, because this one is very easy, both of them, okay, and to get this thing done. Okay, now we go into the council member Gutierrez. How many you have today?
Okay, usually my numbers are not right, so.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Just go, let's go with the first one.
Okay, so the first request is to make a council request to direct a letter on behalf of the council, signed by every member to the Honorable LA County Supervisor Hila Alzaliz, seeking her assistance for additional funding for our police department's hope team. Chief Cortina has expressed his desire for the need of additional resources by expanding the services of La Canada Mental Health Services in order to have additional after-hours resources to assist individuals who are facing homelessness or who are homeless. By no later than the January 21st council meeting.
Okay, so you require the city send a letter, request or phone call or what?
A official letter on behalf, signed by every member of the city council on behalf of the city.
City have a letter signed by five city council, okay, and to maybe even including our police, okay, chief, that request the funding from our supervisor district number one, Hila Alzaliz. Am I right? For the major age, for the support of our, okay, and the police grant for homeless?
La Canada Mental Health Services. But yeah, yeah, I mean, you're, you're phrasing it right, but yeah, I think, I think Lisa got my.
We got it.
Original one.
You got it, right?
Yeah.
You got it, right? So, so we need a funding, right?
Yes, yes.
So we request a funding for the program, including the mental health and homeless, this and that, okay, and so they can help our police department to perform their job. Okay, anybody against that? Okay, can you have us to sign? And I remember last time we should sign the proclamation for, okay, we haven't get this proclamation, we haven't signed anything. So can you give us a proclamation to sign regarding the, the insurance? You forgot?
No, he did not.
Okay, where's the proclamation? Supposedly we should send out ASAP.
The insurance commissioner had addressed it, I think, a couple of days before that Tuesday meeting, sent out a press release and it's been addressed.
Uh.
So we were late on the reso. I believe Mayor Portem asked around September. I think that's when the cities were doing it. And then I think it was December 16th, right before our second meeting in, in.
What I'm saying is we request a resolution, five of us sign to request about this emergency insurance crisis?
Exactly, and, and the state addressed it.
So we don't have to sign?
Right, exactly. It was encouraging the state to take action and the state addressed it, I believe, a couple, a couple of days before it was requested again.
Yeah, council member Gutierrez?
Yes, just like Mayor Wu stated, five council members gave a, a request and I don't want to create the precedent that allows items that are being requested under a council request to then be deferred and not act on. So if the state of California did act on this matter, I will like, I mean, we were still like something to go out acknowledging the good job of the commissioner if that was the fact, if he did address that, so.
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Madam May I?
So, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, but that's, that was my, my concern.
Agree, agree. Okay, thank you.
And I know we spoke because one, we delayed for so long, so that was already a negative thing. But two, I know when we spoke, I said to give us an update of, they addressed it, but what was the outcome? We as a council and the community doesn't really have the full details.
And this is.
City manager did address that in our city manager report.
And this is before the holiday season and we told, we told you, we will be around, just give us a freaking, okay, a proclamation, we sign. We're willing to sign. So it's nothing to delay because this is second cases again, okay, and, okay, we ask something we all agree upon, but everybody disappeared and we say we all, everybody in town, okay, why not give us sign and send it back to them? Right? City manager?
We could have done that. I believe that Tom had a conversation with the city.
Doesn't matter. We asked him for sign, okay, and we always say we're willing to sign anytime. I need you give us to sign and send to the state. Okay, and we need to have that thing done to show the, the, the city council request to sign and, right, you guys still want to sign, right? Yeah, you guys, again, anybody against to sign that? No, we, we want to sign. I don't care, we don't care the, the state talking about their thing, but we city still say you don't do your job. We want you to, okay, cure, okay, and resolve this crisis. We want to show them we care and react to what residents want us to do. Make sense? So how soon we can get this proclamation to sign? Okay, or resolution to sign?
We just want to show support.
Yeah, how soon? I don't know how difficult is that? Just print the, the thing there, sign.
And so we were prepared to do it and it was, it was to ask the state to take action. Well, the state already took action. So we can still send it saying, thank you for taking the action.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
Either way, but I don't know what their actions really can make the sense. Okay, hopefully we can say they're not good enough. You want to do more. We want you to do more so people can get insurance. So again, again, we just want them to, to do something and people suffering cannot get a, get a, okay, insurance. Yeah, council member?
Uh, yeah, and if I'm not mistaken, the request was to not only direct a letter to the Honorable Insurance Commissioner Carl Laura, but also the Chair of the Insurance Commission for both the Senate and the State Assembly.
Just execute. We, otherwise, no point for us sitting over here, approve something and you go to your hand and nothing come back to us. So if we say sign, approve, and then just provide that phone and we sign and you mail out and show us your mail out, we done. And they should be sure and go. Now, we always come back to verify and there was excuses, there was cure, we don't have to do it. Then every time we do something, say, oh, this is already done, cure, we don't know, it's not, should not be like this. Okay, so anyway, let's move on, please. Okay, ASAP, before the next meeting, we should have that phone signed by five city council and then send to the state showing the West Covina really want the.
It'll be on the agenda for your next meeting.
Okay.
Council needs to take the action. It's adopting a resolution.
Then we sign it right away. Okay, thank you so, thank you. Okay, and, okay, next one, please?
Yes, the next council request is direct the city manager to work with the traffic committee to put a safety reduce, safety, to enact safety reducer solutions on North Bronmore and Roland Avenue. Some of those examples can be a speed monitor sign, but I would like to specifically see a, a monitor sign that has red and blue flashing lights to that sign that other cities have. And it has shown statistically that vehicles do slow down when they see those red and, red and blue lights.
I think this is similar to the Cotess issue with a flashing warning sign to slow down the traffic.
So if I could add to Mayor Wu's request and add Cotess Street to that.
Yes.
City manager, if you could do an email by this week to the, to the, to the traffic committee.
So, so.
We're combining Madam May Is.
No, 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 no need to. Okay, this, okay, I, we have mine and they just have his, okay, so in that way have his Madam May I about that so street?
Yes.
Have a, okay, city, the community, okay.
Got it.
Traffic committee to look into and how to do the sign flashing to slow down the traffic. I think the issue is we have a lot of street speeding and they create an accident and then we just want people to slow down, but the only way to can force them to slow down is, is the flashing light and not understanding the front. It will be a curve or something they can, they might hit the wall. So, so we don't want to have more accident and people lost their life. So anyway, next one, please?
Uh, so yeah, so just to clarify that one, I am specifically asking that the speed monitor sign include red and blue lights to it. And, and as, as a cost effective measure, we do have electrical engineers on our public works staff. So if we could please use them so that way we could get this project done faster by our city being able to purchase the parts and then using our public works to actually install it.
Agree.
And then we're going to get, we're going to get things done faster like we're supposed to.
Agree. So, so, so my Madam May I and his Madam May I is all talk about same thing, all want to the cause effective and promptly to make the thing happen to save life. Okay, next one, please?
Yes, the next council request is to, is for the city manager to provide an update on her use of SLERF funds used that was approved by the council in early December 2024 by the second meeting of January, uh, sorry, by the first meeting of February. I do the city manager needed time, so the first meeting of February.
You understand what you're talking about? And anybody against that? Okay, let's move on, next one?
Okay, next one. To request the city manager to present to the council an update on the state audits report by the second meeting of January. Please address in specifics why the contracting policies won't be updated until July 2025 if they have not already been so. Also go over why the city remains at high risk and what are we doing to fix this issue and what, what actions will our city manager be taking?
Okay, anybody against that? Okay, when's the time?
Second meeting of January.
Um, hold on. Okay, our, our finance director want to say something? Come, yeah, go ahead.
Due to the timeframe that we have to actually report back to the state, we're going to be taking this to the audit committee on January 27th. And so I would ask that we could have it come to council the first meeting in February so that audit committee can go through and make their list of recommendations in that before bringing it to council. I will say that the contracting policy was approved and amended by council in November and then the first meeting in December. The timing of it led to their publication and our completion at the same time. So it was still in the report.
Okay.
Okay, they should fix that then. But yeah, so I'm in my thing to make a deadline by the, to, this has to come back by the first council meeting in February.
You okay with that, Director?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, and see, happy family. Okay, and then let's move on. Okay, next one, please?
Next one. To request the city manager to work with staff to present options to the city council on the costs related in the city itself. So it says, piggy, kind of piggyback on what Mayor Wu said earlier about business licenses and, and it could join in whatever, whatever it's preferred, but it's just a, it's to request the city manager to work with staff to present options to the city council on the costs related in the city itself being responsible to issue business license. Also inform the council what the contracting company currently does. Many business owners have expressed concern regarding the constant delay of obtaining licenses. We are, we are a business friendly city and we cannot allow this to happen anymore. And yeah, and I think, wouldn't you request to back Mayor Wu?
ASAP, like, I know you always want.
I put the second meeting of February.
What, what day you can bring them back?
February, so I think.
Yeah. February, the first meeting?
You said second?
I think she needed the second meeting.
Second meeting is okay, okay, okay. And his Madam May I has similar. Second meeting is okay, 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 and his mother may I similar to mine, we can combine together, uh, do the same thing, so we don't have the redundant, right?
Yes.
Okay, and next one, please?
The, uh, the next council request is to direct the city manager, uh, uh, let's see, hold on, let me make sure, um. Okay, to direct the city manager to work with the Assistant City Manager Roxanne Lorma and Deputy Director of Community Services Suzie Perez to present to the council at the February, the first meeting, uh, in February. The current income being generated and expenses and a review of the filled rental costs at the sportsplex. I strongly believe, uh, that there's an unfair cost, uh, between sports at this, at, at the sportsplex and I would like, uh, a review and comparison of the fees and, and have the city staff present a report back to the city council, um, that addresses wa, uh, addresses that these fees should be equal. There shouldn't be, soccer shouldn't be more than softball. It's unfair and, and I think we need to address that.
Okay, got it. Okay, uh, I think we have, uh, a mother may I and already approved to request, okay, Suzie Perez, our deputy director, give us presentation of our sportsplex about what's going on, okay, about the, that would be including the fee, okay, and that, that is about time. So can you discuss, can you tell us when she can have a chance to, we've been, supposed to be last year's, okay, October, but due to some issue, we delayed to say after, okay, maybe the new year. Now the new year come, uh, we want to this presentation ASAP.
It's actually scheduled for the next council meeting on January twenty first.
Perfect. Okay, and then we've been coding why his request about fee issue?
We will, yeah, we will include, uh, the fee.
Okay, you're okay with that?
Fees for the park. I don't know that, we'll see if we can get a comparison for other facilities and
I, I don't need a comparison. I'm just saying that there's unfair fees happening at the sportsplex and we need to address that point.
Okay, and since, uh, since our director Suzie Perez will come give us a, a, a presentation and you can ask her during the time regarding the fee issue. So I think since we already scheduled for next meeting, so very good. Okay, we move on next, mother may I?
Okay, the next one. The next council request is to direct the city manager to invite Westina Health Director Dr. Bezo Massenchat to brief the council and the public on the current status of the city's application to become a public health department. Present updates to the current rising health issues affecting Los Angeles County, the state of California and the United States. Please also present what community outreach Dr. Bezo has accomplished and done in the community and how the public can request Dr. Bezo's appearance at their school, church or workplace. In the interest of transparency and accountability, I also request an update on the cons, uh, update, an update to the council and the public on the current expenses related to the Westina Health and the financial, and the financial breakdown on paper by our finance director, director. Since the start of the health department to present, this should be presented at the February eighteen council meeting.
Is that okay, the times, it's okay with you?
Presentation.
Yeah, presentation. Okay, and yes, we need to update when the state can give us, uh, the status, the approval or the, or anything, because we like into the black hole and we don't know what's going on. So hopefully with that presentation, at the same time, we can tell the state, hurry up, okay, what is dragging? Okay, and with that presentation, everybody can understand. I think it's a good one. Okay, and, uh, nobody against that? Okay, very good. And next agenda?
Uh-huh.
The next, the mother may I?
The next council request is to direct the city manager to expand the grant, the grant writer presentation or, or, or general item that's coming our way, uh, I believe at the next council meeting. To also include an option to establish a assistant city manager of grant administration. This person will have extensive, have an extensive successful record in securing grants and will oversee all grant operations for the city of West Covina, including but not limited, working in conjunction and oversight of our, uh, Western Police Department, Fire Department and, and cities grant writer currently and, and overseeing them and assisting them in securing millions and hundreds and thousands of dollars in federal grants and state grants that the city of West Covina, uh, has missed out on year after year.
So you want the city manager to as a headhunter to, uh, to hire assistant managers slash, uh, the grant, the grant writer?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, yes, go ahead.
I thought your mother may I was to include it as an option in the
Yeah, part of the presentation. She's gonna, she's gonna be presenting at the next council meeting, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so it'll be one of our, our options.
Okay, and so, anybody against that? Nope, okay, and, uh, great job, okay, uh, move on.
Okay, this one is a, is very remarkable. This was accomplished in a long, long meeting earlier today where, uh, where our city manager, uh, Paulina Morales and our, uh, finance director, uh, Stephanie Sekima. Sorry if I'm pronouncing your last name right, but here we go. This is exciting news. Get ready. Instruct the city manager to use Orangewood Park Park Development Funds of the one point three million dollars that has been budgeted to implement a new state of the art ADA playground and refurnish the backs, the basketball court and replace the two current pavilions. Redo the skate park design and incorporate ADA accessibility and remodel the public restrooms and create an ADA accessible route to and from the front of the, to and from, from the front of the park and the back of the park. Please focus on the state of the art playground replacement and refurnish basketball courts, pavilions. Please submit an RFP in collaboration with the Community of Senior Services Commission. After this, um, okay, please submit an RFP in collabor, please submit an RFP by no later than March thirteenth. Bring back to the council to award a RFP by the second council meeting of May, which is May twentieth, twenty twenty five.
Uh, okay, uh, the councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, city manager, don't we have a park plan or master plan that's supposed to be presented to us about all the parks?
Yeah, so we are in the process of bringing a report to you to select a vendor to, uh, initiate the park master plan that's gonna look comprehensively at all of our parks and park facilities, um, and what are the areas that we need to improve on, what are we, areas that, um, or facilities that are working and things that we need to improve in those, uh,
I want some of his money.
And, and, uh, okay, okay.
One point three.
Boys and girl, boys and girl, hold on. Okay, point order, no fighting over here. And why not sound like all the district fighting for money? Please, okay, we are working for one city, united we stand.
Yeah.
Okay, please, okay, and, and I want, I want to say something, hold on. I want to say one thing over here, okay? We've been requesting, um, the master plan for park to present to us. Why we haven't received that presentation? We've been waiting for a long time. We, okay, we want to have a presentation for sportsplex about, uh, the, okay, what the current, uh, 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 performance and how about our restaurant, can we starting, okay, contract, we're talking about this for so many years. So hopefully we have, uh, our very, very good staff, okay, Suzie Perez to, okay, and to make thing happen to help us, to give us a presentation. And then the park master plan, how soon, yes, uh, assistant city manager, go ahead.
To the chair, if I may, um, couple of things I want to point on and just to piggyback on what city manager Morales had said. Um, she'd stated that we are bringing forward a recommendation to the city council for a firm to put together the comprehensive park master plan. To your point, um, councilwoman Diaz, that would still coincide with what, um, council member Gutierrez's, um, idea concept um, for, um, uh, the direction of Orangewood Park to rehabilitate the park and essentially rebrand that park for utilization, for inclusively utilization by the public. Um, so that would still be appropriate, a part, a comprehensive parks master plan would identify, um, not only needs and opportunities, but funding sources. So the fact that we're having these conversations right now, that these conversations are ongoing with the city manager and our finance director, we're getting a head start.
Got it, okay.
And that, that doesn't leave out the public input, that doesn't leave out, um, council's input, it's again,
Got it, got it.
We're doing our homework, getting a head
Appreciate, okay, my point is, we are asking for the duration, the time when this is gonna present to us.
The, as indicated by the city manager, we are bringing forward the firm at our next council meeting for a recommendation by the council. We will work, um, to develop not only a timeline that will also be discussed.
What time, when, what months?
Um, it takes about six months to develop the park master plan and the reason that it takes that time period is because of the amount of public outreach that it would require.
But I think we have this request since, okay, a year, two years ago about this master plan. And, uh, right now you say you need another six months?
No, the firm, once we bring a firm on, we've signed the contracts, the city council has approved, um, we can move forward with that.
Well, we haven't start anything for the master
We have, we have produced the RFP, we have interviewed the firms that will be, um, putting together the RFP. You will have, or excuse me about the RFP, the comprehensive parks master plan will be working with you as well as the community.
Got it. City manager, okay, I think, okay, maybe we have some misunderstanding over here. My understanding, okay, since last year, the year before last year, we talked about master park plan during the, even the previous city manager, they commonly talk about master plan. Now we're talking about, we don't even have IP, the consultant.
No, sorry, an RFP has been, uh, we released a request for proposals, we have received proposals. And so now staff has been going through the, the vendors that have submitted the proposals and we are reviewing that. So that's what's gonna be brought before
The point is right, why over here is because we need to avoid, okay, and the next district number one talking about his one point three million dollars and the district three talking about where's my money?
I, I, I could address that, Mayor, when I, when I get an opportunity.
Hold on, let me finish, don't cut in, please. Okay, so, so what we try to avoid is how we can get all the, all the city with different district, all get treated equally. Okay, and then the master plan of the park, it's important to see all the park all get treated equally. And hopefully we can get a grant because we even want to build, okay, the station, okay, the so-called the Edgewood, okay, and the sports center, that should be into the plan too. So we can utilize entire city equally with all the park, uh, with all the set equally attention. Okay, am I right? So how soon we can get that thing done?
I, I
Okay, let me, let me, I'm asking.
On my, my?
I know, I know.
Sort of different.
Oh, no, okay, I want to see how we can get it done.
If I can clarify, you're asking when we're gonna bring the, uh, park master plan before you for your consideration?
Yes.
Roxanne?
Once you award that contract, we're gonna be working on a six
Okay, got it. Okay, so you have an
The council, the contract to council for the arc, for the landscape architectures coming at the next city council or the consideration. Once that's, once that's awarded, we will begin a extensive, extensive, not only community outreach, because that's a big, huge portion of the parks master plan, but also putting it together.
Got it. Okay, cause this, this is not a discussion about master plan. I want to go back to council member Gutierrez, finish up his mother may I. Go ahead.
Yes, so, um, just to clarify, cause I think there's some confusion about what the park development fund is and one, the one point three million dollars, why, why it was allocated. Uh, that development fund was allocated because of the, of the development in District One of the, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the new housing projects within District One that the residents of District One just re, I mean, multiple housing, uh, elements, can we clarify that?
So if I could clarify a little bit, um, so when a development happens, they can either pay, um, uh, they have to pay, uh, park fees. And those park fees go to, I believe, the park within that area. So it's not necessarily within the district, but it's the closest park to that development. And so with the developments, um, on Cameron Park, um, I believe those are the, they paid that park fee that went towards, um, the closest park, which would be Orangewood Park. So there's other, uh, park development funds, the PDFs for the different parks based on the developments around them, they get that funding. But I can have, uh, our finance director
I, I, I really don't want to stuck in this mother may I, but go ahead.
Um, just to add to that, so even though the, uh, funding did go into that PDF, council can and has in the past moved funding to other PDFs that may not have enough funding or may not be as revitalized and getting renewed funds for the park areas.
So he basically talking about the mother may I is a one point three million dollars allocate, okay, and to the Orangewood Park and this and that and that. Is that one point three million dollar already assigned to this park?
It did come into that park in that PDF, but council could choose to move it to a different PDF if they so choose.
So basically his request is what the other city council have approved? So if it's all the city council not going to approve, he's not going to get a basketball court, and that's what are you talking about?
Yes, so we haven't appropriated the funds. It just funding came in, revenue came in, it goes into that PDF. We get all the PDFs and then if
So that money can spread out to all the park?
It could.
It could. But what is you guys' suggestion? Because he requests to, all this money going to the, uh, Orangewood.
Can, can I answer that? Cause that's my request, um, uh, I would urge my console, uh, to please support me in this, in this mother may I. If you go to Orangewood, it is, uh, violating federal ADA regulations and laws. The city is violating the ADA. Uh, we have a playground that's a hazard and, and, and it puts a, a, a jeopardy of a lawsuit to occur against the city. We have a skate park
Got it.
Where homeless people are living in there and sleeping in there and this is, this is money that local developers in District One had to pay.
Okay, got it, got it.
Yeah, so
Got it. If it is, if that money going to clean up the skate park, because skate park need a major clean up. Is that, that money can
So that, that one point three million couldn't go towards, um, specifically and inclusively only Orangewood and it could go towards any improvement at that park, including the skate park?
But the skate park is really in trouble right now. Okay, can we, okay, uh, because he talking about, okay, what, what you guys have, what?
What's his mother?
Could we act on the mother may I? What are we gonna do with the mother may I?
I understand, but the, because right now his mother may I is called a one point three million dollar. You need all the city council to approve with that money allocate to Orangewood Park only. If we approve, that money will go to there, but now we will say, hey, how about this money will go into the skate park to clean up the skate park. It's still in his district. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I was gonna say, uh, Councilman Gutierrez just brought this as a mother may I. Um, if we want to move forward for it, then they will present to us and then we can discuss further. But this is not the time to discuss this, um, so I mean, I, I do support.
Very, very good point. Okay, this is just a mother may I, I'm just, uh, way into the argument.
I don't want to argue.
Because, uh, okay, and because councilwoman Diaz starting with this, go ahead, you want to say something?
I don't argue, you know me.
Oh, I know, I know. You make sense, you make sense, go ahead.
You know, I, uh, I'm just trying to work for my district.
I understand.
It's nothing personal and I'm not trying to take money from this, I mean, from Councilman Gutierrez. But it was just something that I wanted to bring up because we do have a master park, uh, park plan and I just
Councilman Cantor, you so quiet, you want to say something?
Yes, um, I, I really, um, I, I, I'm supportive of the principles of, of what, um, Councilman Gutierrez has said. Concurrent with that, we, we need to look at, just at the broader park, park master plan and find a way to best allocate the resources because let's say, for example, what if we don't, it doesn't, for him to achieve those goals, what if it doesn't cost one point three million? It only costs, um, six hundred thousand. I'm just throwing something out. In other words, we need to make a holistic approach for, uh, uh, improving our parks all, all across the city. And as, as I have been to that park where, and I'm actually pretty outraged as to how the park looks there. Um, I went with Councilman Gutierrez and I can see why he's passionate about that. It is a really horrible, it's embarrassment. And concurrent with that, but I'm just explaining that, that we need to be, uh, look at the overall efforts of, um, by letting the park master plan process move forward, get input about all of the parks and then factor that in, including the, the, the things that, that he's asking for, so that way we put, we do it all together in a way that's organized, so that way we maximize use of all the resources, um, across all of the parks.
Very good. Okay, and, uh, I think it's a good point. Okay, I think sound like, are you okay with his mother may I? Okay, and you want to say something?
Yeah, and I'll just, uh, just to answer, uh, Councilmember Cantos's, uh, question. What I was told today in our meeting is that Orangewood, Orangewood Park did not have, uh, I think, goals in place for that parks plan, so as, uh, Paulina, can you clarify, can you clarify that?
Yeah, so, um, for example, Del Norte Park had in the CIP project, uh, capital improvement project program money, I think it was one point three million for certain improvements for that park. So while we did receive, uh, one point three million in the park development fund, that doesn't mean that a project was approved by the council. And so, um, uh, Councilmember Gutierrez's request tonight is to create a project, um, for that park so that we can start looking tonight is to create a project for that park, so that we can start looking at putting bids out for some of the improvements that he's prioritizing.
Got it, okay, is that including the skate park?
I believe it included the skate park, focusing on the playground.
Yeah, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be part of, it's gonna be a part of the master plan, that's gonna eventually come back, but also prioritizing.
No, I, I will support you, okay, I, I think the skate park and some of the, they're horrible, but I need to take care of all the colleague, okay, I don't want to, like, all the love on his side, because he's asking that much of it, but I think it makes sense, I don't think anybody against that?
Yeah, and Mayor, I'll just say, yeah, I thank my colleagues for supporting me on this, and, and on behalf of the 12,000 residents of District One, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for supporting them in, in supporting their local.
It's West Covina, we, we.
On behalf of, and the whole city, but specifically for the district that I, that elected me here today.
I know, I know, but.
We thank you for putting that park as a.
And, and, okay, thank you so much, Brian, okay, councilmember Gutierrez, okay, I know, I know that it's been obsolete for a long time, and that we need some update, and we got this money, we really need to kind of fix up the area, we all agree upon, but, and any other park, they have some similar issue, this and that, we all need to address, but, but I don't think anybody against that, going to, okay, approve this, okay, and bring it back, and hopefully in no time, we can have a master plan, and to share equally to each of the park, we have 16 park, okay, and so we can have all this, everybody can address the issue, okay, and, and we can find the funding, and I think our Brian Gutierrez has a lot of connection from the federal or the state, and maybe he can help us to get a park grant, so we can fix all the things for, make all the park prime for people to enjoy it, okay, next, next, mother may I?
No more mother may I's.
You disappoint me, okay, I would, I want more, okay?
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
It's, it's a small one, I'd like to ask that the council put on the agenda approval of, of funding support for a crossing guard at a Telus Academy, because of the history of danger in that area, and calls by the community in that area for a crossing guard.
Okay, and is that city can look into the funding source, and regarding crossing guard, because crossing guard look like it's a city liability and responsibility?
If I may, the, the crossing guards that we do have have been in partnership with the school districts, so they're partially funded by the schools and partially funded by the city, so are they looking to partner with us for a crossing guard?
Based on an email by the superintendent earlier today, he, he said that under existing, it's our responsibility, so I, I just, I mean, but I, I don't want there to be any, anyone hurt there, so at least, it's different from apparently what we have with West Covina Unified, where we pay half, they pay half, but.
And, and councilmember Gutierrez?
So I'm a graduate of Nogales Sisu, which is part of the Rolling Unified School District, as a young kid, and if I remember correctly, Rolling Unified decided to cut funding to support cross, cross, crossing guards in certain school sites, and I think it's important that they cough up some money too, if they want our support.
And I think we should support the crossing guard, but we should share the burden, because it's all taxpayers' money, okay, and we don't have a blank check, and we don't, okay, and just, okay, and write a check for them, but, and hopefully we can work together, so, so the mother may I, city looking to the cooperation.
Look into cooperative relationship with the district in order to support the establishment of a crossing guard position at Telus.
Yes, and that we, that we have no problem with that, okay, and right, everybody support that, right, and the city looking to, talk to the school, and see how can we share the cause, okay, and to make sure the kid is safely crossed, okay, and into the, okay, and the school, and, and, you guys, hold on, okay, and one, one things, I want to follow, to piggyback with Councilman Cantel, since last time we talking about, I assign myself, okay, and the school liaison with council member Gutierrez, and we talking about with Covina Unified School, and the West Covina Unified School, and the Rolling Unified School, any of school in our city jurisdiction, we need to look into, okay, potentially hazardous traffic situation around the campus, okay, it's what should we improve, okay, for example, and the, the, okay, and the pedestrian walkway, okay, surrounding the city, and, well, okay, we do not want any children, and we get hurt by the motorist, this and that, so, so this is something I think we've been requesting before, but never come back to us, go ahead, councilwoman?
I believe we have a grant, right?
Correct, we did apply, and we've received ATP funding, and I apologize, I'm not gonna know what that acronym is for, but with that, we are able to do improvements around schools, so that it helps improve, you know, crossing.
That's I remember, but never bring back to us.
We could do a presentation to the, of the council.
Can we give a presentation, and can we invite the school district, and, okay, about what we're going to do, and helping all the safety around the school campus?
I believe it's a couple of school districts, so we can provide an update from the engineers as what are the improvements that are being.
Part of grant we receive, and we can utilize, another thing we can use the grant, okay, and any other mother may I? Go ahead.
No, by, my next one would be, as to if we have not done, if, if we have not done so already, or, or, if we have, then renew the request for a city of emergency on homelessness in our city, so we could garner more state and federal funds to address the rising homeless issues in the City of West Covina, and, and, yeah.
You're looking for the grant for the homeless, I think we have learned last time on the Councilman Ollie Cantos regarding homeless, and he want to add on major A on top of your hope team, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, a, a city of emergency is similar to a state of emergency, it may open up avenues for more funding to come to us when we declare a city of emergency on homelessness.
You want the city to declare the state of emergency for homeless issue?
City of emergency, yes.
Yeah, no, okay, so you want us to, city attorney, would you please look into it, because they have a point come, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, just I want to make sure we're on record that, that we cannot, with regard to the housing first policy, I, with whatever funding, we, we, we cannot just support housing first, because there is no accountability requirement for any money, there's millions of dollars already available through the different grants, but in order for us to receive that, we, we have to allow various things to happen, including no, no major accountability if people decide to do their drugs or drink or whatever on, on site, so that's just, I just wanted to make sure to point that out with whatever we do on homelessness, that we need to oppose housing first.
Understand, but, but I think his, mother may I, is the city looking to declare the city emergency for homelessness issue, am I right?
Yeah, so just to clarify, I am asking for the City of West Covina to declare a city of emergency, Tom, or Paulina, can you explain what a city of emergency means?
I think we've just gone with the term state of emergency, declaration, emergency for the city, but.
That happens when?
And the COVID-19, the pandemic?
Yes.
And we, we follow the state, and then reduce or remove, dissolve our city emergency, but I, I need this for the legality issue for poor income, because it's not easy, okay, and then what is the consequence if we declare that, because then we, our credit will be hid or this and that, so city, okay, to look into it, yeah, okay, so, so city looking to it, okay, and to bring what the point come, if you want to do that, I think he's what councilmember Gutierrez want is how we can do get grant, and, and that is what the purpose, to, otherwise what is the point, to declare the emergency if we don't have a benefit, okay, and any other, yeah, you have more?
So just to clarify, the City of Los Angeles declared a city of emergency, and that allowed federal funds to come their way to assist them in any homeless issue, which, so in my case, a civil emergency will be declared on specific homelessness, so it may open the door for us to get more money for La Canada and expand their services, yes.
Okay, we have ATA City in San Gabriel Valley, if ATA City all declare, okay, I don't know, okay, how much money they going to give to ATA City just for San Gabriel Valley, so, but anyway, enough of discussion, we have a city we already approved, the city to look into, okay, and emergencies, a city of emergency for homelessness, and to see the point come, and any consequence, okay, and any other mother may I? Are you guys sure, I, I think we are rolling, okay, you sure want to call tonight, and go home, okay, no, it's enough, you have, and do we have, they were already gone, okay, they're all gone, it was so quiet, okay, no cake, no punch, no coffee, it's all gone, because we so dedicated to our job, somebody have a long mother may I, but, but we here is try to do the job for the city, and that's important, I think this is, the show must go on, to continue to improve our city, but I want to thank, okay, again, another strong showing of our councilmember Gutierrez, okay, and, and I want to thank all the members and participate with all the good mother may I, and now it's only thing is how our city manager can execute with all this mother may I internally matter, so people can see the improvement from the city, any other comment, city council want to talk? Okay, Brian?
City council comments now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yes, so, so, yeah, I just wanted to again congratulate chief, our new police chief of the City of West Covina, Chief Retina, and also again, remind the residents of the city, and our residents in the City of West Covina, that this council stays committed on rebuilding and beautifying our public parks, making sure that our firefighters have living spaces and environments where they, they're safe, and then they're able to live, and then able to serve this community, able to make sure that we have enough police officers, and will continue to make sure that the men and women of the West Coast Police Department have the resources they need to protect this community, and, you know, I just recently went on a ride along with our police department, and I was very impressed that our police officers, before they go on patrol, are required to watch a briefing video, and that briefing video goes over different situational awareness on different things they may face on a daily basis, and I commend our, 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 our police department for initiating that, so that's all my comments, if we don't get a blackout, so.
Yeah, thank you, okay, we don't want to get power off, okay, and thank you, councilmember Gutierrez, anybody want to have a comment, otherwise do we have a motion to adjourn?
I motion.
Yeah, have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion, adjourn.